This meeting of the Starkville Board of Aldermen will now come to order. Please rise and sing of the pledge of allegiance, after which Alderman Vaughn would like to yield to Reverend Lindley, lead us in a word of prayer, and we will observe a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious God, we thank you for this good place we live. We thank you for the good people that you've brought here. We thank you for people who are willing to take up the burden of leadership. We wish that you bless this evening. Bless us with wisdom, bless us with patience, bless us with grace as we go about the business of taking care of your world and your people. We pray in the name of our Lord. Amen.
All right, you have before you a copy of the written agenda. Are there any proposed changes to the agendas written?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Maynard.
Mr. Mayor, under Public Hearing 8A, I would like to put that item on consent, which is under Planning 11B2. Asking you to see if there's anybody here to speak for or against that ordinance.
All right, it is the wish of Alderman Maynard to place item 11B2A, the approval for a change of the Starkville Mississippi Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Planning and zoning commission, Section 2-129, terms of offices as presented on the consent agenda. That item requires a public hearing, so in the event that that item goes on to the consent agenda, you would not have another opportunity after this opportunity to speak on that item. So I'm going to ask at this time, knowing that this may be the last opportunity to speak, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the changing of the terms of offices for the Planning and Zoning Commission? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Anyone who wishes to speak on that matter? Anyone who wishes to speak? All right, seeing no one, the change is now eligible. The change would be to strike Public Hearing 8A, a public hearing on the changes of code ordinances, and to place item 11B2A on the consent agenda. Alderman Maynard, is that your proposed revision?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear any objection? Any objection, any objection, any objection saying none of that matter's been placed on the consent agenda? Alderman Maynard, do you have further proposed revisions?
Yes, sir. The next public hearing under there, that item under 11BC, is actually already listed under our agenda on consent, but we need to have the same process for that as we can.
All right, at this time, is there anyone here wishing to make comments regarding the request for approval for conditional use for the Second Baptist Church Sanctuary Edition with conditions as presented? This, similar to the matter we just covered, will be your last opportunity to speak on that matter. Is there anyone wishing to speak on that matter? Anyone wishing? Alderman Perkins.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just very briefly, I'd like to say that we really enjoyed worshiping at the Second Baptist Church on Sunday. It was a delegation of us, and Mayor Parker Wyson was there, your Vice Mayor, Alderwoman Wynne was present, Alderman Vaughn was present, the Police Chief was present, and we just had a very wonderful time. Of course, they have three services there, Mr. Miles, at your church, and we caught the end of the second service at 10:00, and then we were there for the 11:30 service. Of course, I went back to the music, but we really had a good time, a lot of hospitality there, and we're just all excited about what Second Baptist is doing here. But we, and the plan and all that looks really good, everything looks great, and we're just glad that Second Baptist is in the city of Starkville. And thank you so much, and appreciate everybody. And Mr. Sanders, I look back, and oh, let me not leave our Community Development Director out, he was present. You, your presence meant a lot to us, and we just want to thank you for your appearance, your involvement, you've been involved with this entire process. And Mayor, I just wanted to say those things, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your involvement, your comments too, and everyone's involved. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. It was a fine event, and Pastor Stone, we look forward to coming back and cutting the ribbon. At this time, are there any public comments on that matter? Any further comments on that matter? Any comments on that matter? Seeing none, the matter's eligible for consent, and it has already been placed on consent, so there will be no change there. But the proposed revision is to strike the public hearing. Is there any objection to that? Any objection, any objection saying none? Public hearing has been stricken from the agenda. Alderman, do you have further proposed revisions?
Yes, sir. Under Board Business, Item C and D, I would like to move those to the last items considered on the agenda for tonight.
All right, proposed revision from Alderman Maynard is to move Items C and D under Roman Emerald 10, Board Business, to the end of the agenda. Alderman Maynard, is that your proposed revision?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear any objection? Any objection, any objection, any objection saying none? Those matters have been moved to the end of the agenda. Alderman Maynard, do you have further proposed revisions?
Yes, sir. Under Personnel, 11I2, I'd like to move that item to the end of the agenda.
All right, proposed revision by Alderman Maynard is to place Item 11I2, the consideration of options for approval and authorization to advertise the filling of the position of administrative assistant to cover duties for the Mayor and Board of Aldermen and other administrative needs to the end of the agenda as well. Alderman Maynard, is that your proposed revision?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear any objection? Any objection, any objection, any objection saying none? That matter's been moved to the end of the agenda. Alderman Maynard, do you have further proposed revisions?
Under 11B2D, request approval for variance request for the Moreland Real Estate LLC project with conditions, I would like to move that to 10 Board Business, Item G, and reorder the agenda below that.
All right, the proposed revision from Alderman Maynard is to reorder the agenda, placing what was formerly Item 11B2D, request for approval of a variance for the Moreland Real Estate LLC project with conditions to Board Business, Roman Emerald 10, as Item G, and reordering the items that follow to accommodate the change. Alderman Maynard, is that your proposed revision?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear any objection? Any objection, any objection, any objection saying none? Please note the change to your agenda. Alderman Maynard, do you have any further proposed revisions?
Item 11I1 to consent.
Proposed revision by Alderman Maynard is to place Item 11I1 on the consent agenda. That is the authorization to increase the hours for Tiara Connor Cole to temporary full-time employee to cover the Mayor's Office, Board, and other departments as needed until the position of administrative assistant can be filled as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your proposed revision?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear any objection to placing that matter on the consent agenda? Any objection, any objection, any objection saying none? That matter's been placed on the consent agenda. Alderman Maynard, do you have any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions from the members of the board? Any further proposed revisions? Are there any further proposed revisions? Alderman Little.
In the essence of time, I don't know if it's going to be a big issue on that one time, but under, could we add citizen comments regarding the flag matter to public appearances in about 30 minutes for that, 15 and 15?
All right, do you want to add it in any particular place, under public appearances, at the beginning or the end?
At the end's fine.
All right, proposed revision from Alderman Little is to add a public appearance of a collective 30 minutes to speak on the resolution regarding the state flag, 15 minutes for those wishing to speak in favor, and 15 minutes for those wishing to speak against. Is there any objection? Any objection, any objection saying none? That matter's been added to the agenda. Alderman Little, do you have further proposed revisions?
No, sir.
Any further proposed revisions from the members of the board? Alderman Walker.
I would like to remove from consent and table Item 10, what is currently on here, L, which is now moved to M.
All right, now, so you want to remove it from the agenda, and you want to table the matter. All right, since you are tabling it without debate, well, first, I'll call and see if there's any objection. Alderman Walker's proposed revision is to remove a request for approval for Alderwoman Lisa Wynne, CAO Taylor Adams, Buddy Sanders, and Edward Kemp to attend the National Brownfield Conference September 1st through 6/2015 in Chicago, Illinois, which is reimbursable by the Brownfield brand with advanced travel approved in an amount not to exceed $2,900 per person. Alderman Walker's proposed revision is to remove that from the consent agenda and to table the matter. Is there any objection?
Objection from the Vice Mayor.
All right, that has been objected to, so it will remain on the agenda. Do you wish to make a motion on it or leave it there?
No, we can leave it there, but I'd like it removed from consent.
All right, that matter's been removed from the consent agenda. Any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions? Are there any further proposed revisions to the agenda? Any further proposed revisions? Saying none, the motion to approve the agenda as revised is in order. I move. Motion's been made by Alderman Carver to approve the agenda as revised. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Wynne. Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion saying none? All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. You now have before you the approval of the consent agenda. Is there any objection to the approval of the consent agenda as revised? Any objection to the approval of the consent agenda as revised? Any objection, any objection, any objection saying none? The consent agenda as revised has been approved. The next matter you have before you is announcements and comments by the Mayor and members of the Board. I have no announcements or comments tonight. Are there any announcements or comments by the members of the board? Alderman Perkins.
No, sir, ma'am.
Alderman Wynne.
Will Chief Nichols come to the front, please? Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
Will you speak to your crime, night out on crime that's going to be scheduled to be held August 4th?
Yes, ma'am. On August 4th, I'd like to invite the public as well. On August 4th, we have in our second annual National Night Out Against Crime. This year, we're going to do it a little bit different than we did last year, thanks to Mr. Herman Peters. He made arrangements for us to have it at the Sportsplex. We expect in a big crowd. We've invited local churches, MSU, different auxiliaries out there, and what we're planning on doing is just, it's basically a celebration. Everything we're going to have there is going to be free. We have a lot of vendors that are going to be there, and everything they're giving away is going to be free. There's nothing for sale. So hopefully, we're giving away some backpacks, school supplies, things like that, so.
Thank you so much, and that's in my ward, and thank you for everything that you do, Chief Nichols.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome.
Will Mr. Terry Kemp at this time come forward, please?
Good evening, Mr. Kemp.
Good evening.
Mr. Kemp, on Tuesday, July 14, 2015, the postal service employees were left without water for probably more than eight hours that day. If you will, will you speak to the board about that matter?
Okay. We found out after the fact, we did get a call back, I think, later that afternoon from the postmaster. After investigation, we found out that the contractor who was actually doing construction, a croaker, was operating a valve which he did not know was impacting that customer. After we identified it, we went out and talked with him, and he recognized that he had been doing that a couple of times earlier. He thought it was on a fire hydrant. Misunderstanding his part, he's made contact with the post office, and hopefully we've got that all corrected so that it will not recur.
And let me say this, Mr. Kemp. Initially, the clerk from the post office, as well as the postmaster himself, reached out to our city officials numerous occasions that morning, and their calls were unanswered on return. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, and I do have that in an email from him. And Mr. Kemp, would you tell the public, who is our manager of water and sewer in that department?
Doug Devlin is actually the manager of operations for our water and sewer department.
Thank you so much. And would you say that at 5:45 that evening, because you contacted me at that time, and they had just gotten their water services back?
They'd gotten back earlier, but we'd made contact and made sure that we knew what the problem was, and made all, you know, addressed the issue at that time.
Okay, and thank you so much, Mr. Kemp.
Okay.
Is there anything?
Well, I just wanted to talk about the calling in. We talked about him as well, and I think what happened in that case, it does go to one of our employees, and unless they left a voicemail, and I think that's something we continue to work with, and give them the postmaster and others more phone numbers, but it goes into a voicemail, and then finally, that was what was picked up that afternoon.
Yeah, and let me say this, Mr. Kemp. The postmaster, as well as his clerk, reached out to the numbers that were located in the telephone book. They would not have known to contact the electric department, and this went on until about 2:00 o'clock that day. So thank goodness that the post, and let me ask you this, who was that Alderman that contacted you because the postmaster had contacted him?
He contacted me.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, I yield the floor at this time.
Are there any further comments by the members of the board? Any further announcements or comments by the members of the board? Any further announcements or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to citizen comments, and I will remind you that the issue related to the state flag being removed from city properties has been placed on a separate section under public appearances. Now, citizen comments is an open forum. I cannot prevent anybody from speaking on any topic during this time, but for purposes of having a well-organized meeting, I would encourage you, if you wish to speak on that meeting, on that issue, to wait until the appropriate time to speak. Is, at this time, anyone wishing to make a comment may do so by coming forward, introducing yourself, and you'll be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes.
I'm Roy Mateen here at the Roanoke Hills Subdivision.
I'm Johnny John with Roanoke Hills Subdivision. Board of Aldermen, Mr. Mayor, my complaint is something like utility bill. Recently, we had a bill that's tripled, and I'm in fixed income, and I went in and I talked to Mr. Stan Easton, and we talked about it. What he was saying is that it's going to stay the same, and so I asked him whether he checked my meter. So he wanted charging me for checking my meters, so I'm already complaining about my bill, so I said, "Well, no, don't check my bill." So he wanted, I wanted him to read the meter to make sure that it was right. He wanted to charge me for that, so I'm saying that my bill has been on about the same until now, and I know that he told me it was a 41 days that, well, he had to wait for he read it, and he read it every fourth. But he said, reasoning it was 41 days because it was short of here. But I'm saying, I checked with my other neighbors, and they said they were dissatisfied with it too, their bill is tripled. So I'm asking this, how can a bill triple? About 11 days, maybe. I say, "Well, 10 days, 11 days." And I'm very disappointed with it, and I'd like to see something going about it.
Mayor, may I be recognized? Yes, let me make a comment, and then I'll recognize you. I don't discuss billing at board meetings. If you would like to either come by the office or call over the phone, I'll be glad to discuss with you during the week. Alderman Perkins.
Mayor, thank you very much for the recognition. Mr. Johns came by my office, and as a constituent, I live in Utah, and I'm certainly available to talk to my constituent anytime, whether it's a meeting, or at my office, at church, or Walmart, Kroger, wherever they are, about the issue, because I'm an elected official of this city, and I've worked, and I've serviced you Aldermen for 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and I work tirelessly every day. Been on city assignment all day long. So what I would like to do, if there's no objection from the board, if there's objection, I'll put it in the form of a motion. If there's no objection, I would like for Mr. Johns, for you to give us, from the floor, first of all, to see the objection, but what I'm going to ask you is for you to give your name and address and phone number to our chief administrative officer, and I want him to investigate that, and of course, it requires board action, and we meet again next Tuesday, August 4, 2015. I think this is a reasonable request. We have done this a ton of time over my 22 years on this board, so this is nothing out of ordinary, and we do hear citizen complaints at board meetings. This is regular routine. It's not on you. That's why we're elected. We're elected to do the business of the city of Starkville. So, Mr. Johns, what, you spelled your first name for Mr. Adams.
Johnny, J-O-H-N-N-Y.
And your last name, speak for that.
J-O-H-N-S.
What, you're in Utah, what's that house number?
23 Utah 5.
Okay, and would, do you mind giving the, your phone publicly? You want to approach, or how you want to do?
662.
Okay. And if there's no objection, Mr. Adams, will you be here at the next board meeting?
No, boss, sir.
Would you check with him, just inform the mayor and send some of the Alderman award, and you can let the board know it's the next meeting? If you just check into it, all he's done, asking, you know, just us to check to see what if anything wrong, we're not saying we're going to forgive it, anything certainly, if he used it, he has to pay for it. So we just want to just check it out. You would do that for us?
Yes, sir.
There's no objection. So Mr. Johns, there was no objection, so Mr. Adams is going to check the bill out? He got your address and the phone number, and we'll just let, he'll just let you know. He's the chief administrative officer, he works closely with the mayor here, and he'll give you whatever answer that the investigation reveals. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Now, you can also put my name down as well, because I'm here to say to you that the meter reader did not read my meter, and I know that. They did not read my meter, and I know that personally. And if it has to be proven, I'll prove it, but they did not read my meter.
Mr. Mateen.
Yes, sir.
Give you, Roy Mateen.
Roy Mateen, 94 LaFlore Street, phone number 662-324-0578. No collect calls.
Mr. Mateen, Mr. Adams will check yours out too. We'll let you know.
Yes, sir. I just want, I have one other statement, if you don't mind.
Oh, a sermon, sermon, yes, sir.
Other thing I want to state, we got that out the way, other thing I want to state about ceasefire. Now, when ceasefire, they got a job to do, and I realize that I'm respected and I appreciate it because it's playing a new service into our town. But the thing I didn't like about that, we were never notified that they was coming and doing anything out there. When I talked to the gentleman about it, he told me about the easement that he had. That's fine, not a problem, he's not on my property, he's using the easement. But two weeks ago, I came out my back door, and there's one guy in the back of my house. I don't appreciate that, and don't want that. And also, I want to know whether the liability lies on that. You know, all I'm saying, if you have a job to do, all they got to do, be courteous enough to come there and ring your doorbell or knock on your door to let them know that you're there, and then give them, give a person five minutes at least, because you might be bathroom, you know, saying you might be whatever, you know, but do the decent thing by ringing the doorbell, wait a five minutes, and see if you get an answer. Just don't come on my property, especially around my house. I don't appreciate that at all, and I want to make it plainly clear, because they did that about three weeks ago, and I went out and talked to the young man about it. You know, they need to get their people more or less understood about that by just coming on people's property and just exiting and doing what they want to do without checking with them. That's all I'm asking you, just, you have the, I don't care about you doing it, but just notify.
And Mr. Mateen, they are working pursuant to an excavation permit, so if you ever encounter any issues like that in the future with that contractor or another contractor, please call the office, and we can determine whether they're working within the scope of their permit or not, and it sounds like they may not have been within the scope of their permit there.
Okay, well, I'll do that in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Mateen, thank you, Mr. Johns, thank both of you. Appreciate it. Thanks for having me, Alderman.
Yes, sir.
I'm a little under pressure here, because I'm not usually limited to three minutes at the school board meeting, but the 2013 legislature mandated the consolidation of the Starkville School District and Tewahaw County School District. We worked for over a year studying student numbers and determining what we could do, and we could bring in the 7th through 12th of county students and accommodate them with only a few changes in AMS as well as Starkville High School. There were two desegregation orders, one for Tewahaw County and one for Starkville School District, that had to be merged together in federal court with the Department of Justice for this consolidation to occur. One of the items that the Department of Justice maintained is they wanted us to, in addition to 7th through 12th, bring in the 6th grade as well, so that we would continue the same course offerings to 6th graders in the county that we offer to 6th graders in the city. This necessitated us bringing in a trailer, that is, two classrooms, to place behind AMS so that we could serve students in it, in that trailer. You have a fire ordinance that is 5836 that requires all educational facilities, it doesn't say trailers, but all educational facilities, to be fire suppressant or sprinkled. You also have an ordinance, 5834, which allows us to ask for the fire chief, Mr. Yarborough, to waive that right, since this portable building is temporary, we don't anticipate using it more than two years, it's on a lease program, and I found out this morning that that request, the written request, had been denied, and hence, us coming tonight, because we've got schools starting in about 10 days, and I just don't think the school district should have to incur the cost of a $20,000 fire suppression system that's going to be temporary. We're willing to work with the city in upping the number of fire days or practicing, or radios, or proper fire alarms in the building. We can empty a trailer in a matter of seconds. It takes three to four minutes to empty a school building, and about, I want to say about 25% of our classrooms are not sprinkled. So anyhow, since the fire chief has denied this request, I'd like to request of this group that Municipal Code 5835 to appeal that decision, to have, to be able to not sprinkle these buildings and not have to go through that cause. We take very seriously, Eddie Miles and Jenny Turner, the safety of students. We don't want to jeopardize that at all, but getting students out of a trailer that's on fire is much easier than a school building, and we just don't see it as that much of a safety concern. Yes, sir?
That was done.
That's right.
Yeah, I don't normally do this, but since this is the superintendent of schools, I'll ask if there are any questions or comments from members of the board. Alderman Wynne.
I will definitely be supporting this matter, I just wanted to go through the proper protocols. Having said that, I've got to ask you one question while we are here. On Friday, I received a telephone call from someone at the Greensboro Center telling me that there was only one flag, which was our beautiful American flag, that the state flag was no longer there. Is there a reason for that, that it's not there?
Well, the state law says that school buildings, I mean, schools must display the state flag and the United States flag, but on a municipal building, it's optional. And Ms. Wynne, I don't have any burning passion in this, I just want us to stay out of the controversy of it, and if it offends people, of which the school district is 60% minority, I just don't want to be in the controversy of offending people. Our focus needs to be education.
Dr. Holloway, let me say this to you. I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I don't know if the district follows me on Twitter, but I sent that out on Twitter on Friday. I want to say thank you, because it was an excellent display of leadership, because what I noticed that you just said, 60% of the population for the Starkville-Tewahaw Consolidated School District is now a minority population. You know what, Dr. Holloway? Our little kids should not have to walk into the school on the first day of school and see an emblem that was used to destroy- the first day of school and see an emblem that was used to destroy that, that used that image of a person that had destroyed the lives of nine people senselessly.
Right.
I want to say again, Dr. Holloway, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments for Dr. Holloway?
Ray, may I?
You may.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that, in relation to code fifty-eight, thirty-five, state code, that we will waive this requirement for Dr. Holloway, so they can immediately put these classrooms into place and, and get started with the school year. In lieu of the fire sprinkled system, would also require that they hold two additional fire drills, each one in the fall, one in the spring each year, so that the students in those buildings can practice getting out quickly and efficiently, just in case there is a, a, a fire.
All right. Let me give this a shot. Alderman Maynard has made a motion to grant the appeal of Dr. Louis Holloway pursuant to municipal code section fifty-eight dash thirty-five, granting him relief requested from the requirement to put in a sprinkler system in a temporary classroom facility to be located on the Armstrong Middle School campus. And also to require that two additional fire suppression and evacuation planning exercises be held with respect to this facility. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, say it.
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Yes.
Any discussion, any? Alderman Perkins?
Mayor, just a cup observation. I want to ask the city attorney what legal issues any or do need going executive session discusses.
I'm okay with discussing it in an open session. My opinion, Vice Mayor and board, just to get it on the record, is that the safest and most conservative and best legal approach, and in fact, the approach that I'm advising, is for the board not to grant the variance, but to stick to the automatic sprinkler requirements in the ordinance and affirm Chief Yarborough's decision. And, City Clerk, if you would, please put those statements in the minutes.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman Little?
Chief, I'd like to comment to you. I appreciate you following protocol and our ordinance as you should be. And, Dr. Holloway, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. I know this was unexpected, y'all behind the eight ball as far as getting this moved forward. And school is about to begin within the next week and a half, and I can appreciate that. And as far as the fire suppression system, you said there's only about 25% of the classrooms now?
Seventy-five percent. There's 25% unsprinkled.
Unsprinkled.
These are older buildings that were grandfathered in. I noticed that this building's not sprinkled.
From a, from a practical standpoint, I can certainly see, you know, where you're coming from as far as that extra expenditure and just being a temporary facility. It'd also be easy to evacuate children should the need arise. And it's not like they're gonna be sleeping in this building or anything else. They should be awake alert and be able to get out quickly. So I can be supportive. I understand the reservations from the legal side, certainly. I see that every day. Some of these scenarios you think never happened, I see, you know, they did happen. So I can certainly appreciate that side. Would you recommend some sort of hold harmless agreement? I don't know that we could add an indemnification to being a public entity.
We could indemnify.
You could. I'd like to see some sort of hold harmless indemnification agreement added to that motion.
I'll forward you some language.
I'll support that. If I'm ready, a minute.
Mayor, may I be frank and add?
All right. Let me give this a shot to bring that one as an inclusion. I'm, I'm comfortable directing the city attorney to draft that document and include it in the administrative process, which this will still have to go through community development. Leaving it out of the motion. Alderman Maynard, does that suit you?
Yes, sir.
All right. Alderman Perkins?
Mayor, just two things. Mr. Turner, I think you're gonna probably need board action to do that, because only the board speaks this through its minutes. Just want to say respectfully, I want to appreciate what the superintendent and the school board are doing. Ms. Miles, thank you for your job. Ms. Turner, thank you for yours. I want to do everything I can to support the school system. I cannot support this report just for those legal reasons that happen. My lawyer has on all the time. And, but it's nothing against what y'all are trying to do. I mean, I know y'all are trying to do what you have. But, you know, the sheer thing, you think it may not happen when the lawsuit comes, what the lawyers want to do, he wants to bring everybody in that had an opportunity to get it right. And that's why, in my opinion, that the city attorney went on record. But I think, Mr. Turner, you can advise your client here, but I think that the safest thing, because, you know, if the mayor directs the board, the staff to do that, then that puts the city on a hook. And the law is clear in this state that, that the board speaks through its minutes. So the votes are there. So I think that the board should move forward with the, with the motion, get it in the minutes. So it'll be clearly, no question authorized, that's what they're gonna do. Mr. Turner?
Mr. Vice Mayor, are you talking about adding the indemnification language to the motion?
Whatever.
Because I think the motion's on record. He's talking about just, I think, directing indemnification language to be included.
Oh, okay.
But the motion is on the record and...
Along with the indemnification language?
Well, and I, if there's any debate about it, I don't have any problem with that being a part of the motion, and I think it makes it legally tighter. So I agree.
No, what I'm saying is it just needs to be voted upon. That's all I'm saying.
Sure. I concur.
Alderman Maynard, do you wish to add that to the motion? That a separate indemnification agreement be added?
Yes, sir.
All right. Without objection, seeing no objection, the motion stands as previously stated, but will also include the requirement that the school district enter an indemnification agreement as drafted and approved by the city attorney. Alderman Maynard, are you comfortable with that being the motion?
Yes, sir.
And there has been no objection. Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Alderman Maynard's motion, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By vote of four in favor with two against, this measure passes. And, Dr. Holloway, please continue to work with community development to make sure all other protocols are followed.
The planning commission tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
You may.
Dr. Holloway, I don't see you before then. I wish you the best for the school year 2015, 2016.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Further citizen comments? Do we have any further citizen comments? Any further?
Good evening. My name is Alvin Tom Ward. Let us be real careful. I hadn't seen the movie The Untouchables, but let us be careful. They have a gun law now where ladies can carry weapons in their presence and bags. Let us be careful. Ceasefire, whatever they're doing, is affecting the cable people. And people are being frustrated because their cable is off. For a certain length of time, could you make sure that they don't want to be paying for cable and can't use it?
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Mr. Barrett, board members, my name Chris Taylor. And what I don't understand is item 10, 10-8. Well, y'all added on it approving creeps in the cellar of the mayor and border Alderman effective one July 2017. You know, I could see understanding paying $10 an hour for the lowest paid worker. If you elect to get this raise, there'll be 80% pay raise in four years. You started with $12,000. Then you voted yourself a year early to $15,000. Now you're talking about going to $20,000 a year. You know, that is more than 20% of the average worker here in the city makes. And you know who that 20% is? The sanitation workers, fellow behind the truck, in the water. Those people just like the mailman. Snow, sleet, hail or fall, they out there. So I don't understand. So what is the amount they're talking about increasing for the board and the mayor?
Mr. Taylor, please just make comments during this time.
Well, I just wonder, because it's not listed here. It's on the e-packet.
And I presume it will be introduced at the appropriate time on the agenda.
Well, I just don't understand. That should, that should not be on there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Further citizen comments? Do we have any further citizen comments?
Okay. We'll be quick, three minutes or less. I want to follow on Chris, because I am absolutely amazed that this has come back to y'all. This makes the third time, and I'm hoping that this is going to be the last time that we see y'all talking about pay raises for yourselves. You already make over, equivalent of over $23,000 when you add in your compensation, your straight pay, your retirement, and your health care. That is far more than most of our, or, Mr. Taylor gave you the numbers, but that is more than most of our sanitation workers making. That's just wrong. That doesn't even take into account the travel perks that y'all are enjoying, which range anywhere from, so far, over the last two years, from $10,000 to, we're getting close to $20,000 for some money. These workers don't get that. They don't get to travel. I don't understand. If you truly believe that your position deserves additional compensation, then you should wait until 2017, right before y'all, y'all go out of office, to try to put it through again. That way, everybody sees you when you do it, and don't, don't forget about it when it comes time to vote again. I really would like to see us take a page from West Point. They took a pay cut. And in doing so, perhaps that additional funding that they got, or that would be freed up, would go toward the pay raises that are legitimate issues for this board to take up, which hopefully y'all will do tonight. I think the $10 an hour is a wonderful minimum. You just have compression issues that have to be dealt with. So I would encourage you to please do that. And don't bring y'all back up again. Y'all don't need a pay raise.
Thank you, Ms. Group.
I mean, I have a lot to say, and I'm gonna have a longer time, because it took me a little long time to stand there. But anyway, I would just like to say good evening to everybody. I'm back. I'm sorry, I'm back. You know, I know y'all have been missing. But I would just like to say, I'm coming back tonight to tell you, I know y'all got some pay raises, because I can look at your hair, how neatly you dress, your hair cut, your shoes shine. I would just like to say, on behalf of workers, we like being appreciated sometimes. We like being appreciated sometimes. But now, let's look into the budget to see what we really, really, really need to come back and discuss the intelligence enough that we know what's going on. And our school system, I was just like I said, I've been waiting for this ever since I was a little child. First word I learned how to spell was consolidation. So I almost hear y'all. It's here. It's here. We gotta, you know, we gotta go forward for what we gotta do. I just like to say for our teachers, that we are unemployed, and some of those will not be employed. You know, we just, we gotta be careful about what we do with our money. That's all I want to say. I ain't like my parents. You can free practice, you know. But I'm just gonna tell you, let's have it to where we can. Get a pay raise. Make people happy. Starkville's a place to live, it's a place to work. Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ozzy. Further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments?
Harley Moon. Sanders is Starkville Board Two. I'm here. I want to ask y'all, I want to encourage y'all, when y'all vote tonight, please separate the $10 minimum wage and the pay increase for the board of Alderman and mayor when you're voting. Those issues are unrelated, except that they've somehow gotten tangled up politically. The $10 minimum wage, which I support, by the way, needs to be looked at in the context of a larger comprehensive review of the city compensation structure. The compensation structure, I'm not telling y'all anything you don't know already, is outdated. It's, it's in, it needs to be replaced. That's been true for a while. Passing the $10 minimum wage without an overall review makes that bad system that much worse. So please be deliberate as y'all approach the $10 minimum wage. Please do, please do consider it, but in the context of an overall review. And I'm in agreement with everybody who's spoken. I can come up with no justification, none, for a pay increase for the board of Alderman and, and the mayor, particularly after West Point chose to reduce their compensation for their council. So please vote no on that one. Tagging onto that, I can't think of any reason that four people from the city of Starkville need to attend a national conference on brownfield grants at a cost of $2,900 per person. I don't know that the return on investment is there. So when that comes up, I hope y'all will take a hard look at that. I get that the city is not going to be out of any money, but, but these are grant dollars and will probably be better used for the work of the grant than for travel of the four, four people representing the city. And lastly, y'all have tonight essentially a vote on the stormwater ordinance. The stormwater board had its first hearing recently. The first variance is, is before y'all tonight. So this vote sets precedent going forward for whether or not y'all are going to do what the intent of that ordinance was, which is to have property owners, developers, handle their stormwater on their own property, rather than offloading it to somebody else. I get that this is not the biggest project that's ever going to happen in Starkville. I get that at the moment, it doesn't look like it impacts anybody. But stormwater's a cumulative issue. And your vote tonight is precedent-setting on, on how we look at stormwater going forward. You know how many drainage problems there are around the city. And, and they are, to a great extent, there because we were very late in beginning to ask people to deal with their own water. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Assistant. Further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? All right. Seeing none, we'll move to public appearances. And the first public appearance tonight is by the MSU Student Association and the Division of Student Affairs. They are here to present on the 2% tax and also on Bulldog Bash.
Good evening. We want to first say thank you for having us here tonight to talk about the 2% food and beverage sales tax allocation. I'm Dr. Regina Hyatt, and not only am I new to Mississippi State, but also new to Starkville, and really glad to be here and part of this community. So this is a great introduction for me to our city governance process. So we are here tonight to talk a little bit about what we expect to spend the sales tax allocation on. As you know, this program has been very critical, both from a student life perspective on our campus, but also from the perspective of encouraging students to participate in the Starkville community. And I'm here tonight with my colleague Jojo Dodd, who is our student body president. And Jojo's gonna talk to you a little bit about the actual allocations. And we've provided in your packet a sheet that articulates the specifics of our plan. Jojo?
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time this evening. I'll reference the proposed budget, if you have it in your packets. I'll discuss these items. And I want to make a note, these all are items that are all student-led, except for one. They're all student-led and directed programs and initiatives. So these programs create beneficial activities in our community and our campus, but also create leaders in the students who are the ones promoting these things and planning these things, and getting them valuable soft skills as well as their in-class experience. Other than the list, the allocation is proposed of Music Maker Productions. This is our student group who brings concerts to campus, big name acts like ZZ Top and Jack White most recently. Bulldog Bash, this is our largest pre-album concert in the state, which has happened, happens here in Starkville, and is planned by our student association. It's happening this September 11th, this coming fall, and is always an incredible event, and always a event people travel to Starkville to come be a part of. Next is the night route. It's our Safe Ride program that we provide as a student association to give students a free and safe ride home from being out on the town. The next item is Old Major's Festival, another music festival where students are able to go out and be exposed to musical acts that travel nationally, and people also travel to come be a part of this event. And the following the Lycium Series, this is a cultural programming initiative for music, theater, and performing arts that happens throughout the fall and spring semesters. This money, these activities, serve to benefit both students and the student experience in Mississippi State, and also the community and the economy of Starkville. This money is an investment in students and an investment in our community. I would ask you people to accept this proposed budget for these 2% sales tax. Thank you.
Questions or comments for Dr. Hyatt or Mr. Dodd? Alderman Maynard?
Mr. Dodd, will you go into a little bit more explanation of the, of the night Safe Route for the citizens that are here?
Sure. A couple of years ago, for several years, we had a night route, which is a dedicated bus route in the community that serviced the campus and some neighboring harbor complexes in downtown and the district, the Cotton District. Our writers- in downtown and the district, the Cotton District. Our ridership decreased pretty significantly with that, with that system, and so we implemented last year a cab system, where students can call a one number, and a cab will come pick them up from any residence, from any business or restaurant, and bring them to any residence, bring them home. It's a true Safe Ride program to get you home safely throughout any ride. Discouraging students from drinking and driving is the purpose of this program. And we've seen an increase in ridership in the use of this program since moving to a cab system from the night route, the dedicated shuttle route system. We've seen great success in students being satisfied with the program, and also good success in boosting our ridership numbers, which we expect to do further this next semester.
Thank you very much. Further questions or comments from the members of the board? Alderman Walker.
So welcome to Starkville and welcome to Mississippi State. Thank you. I think this is money that is, that is, for the most part, used well, from the 2% money that goes, and I would, we are so fortunate to have Mississippi State here and the programs. I'm very much looking forward to Bulldog Bash. Where I live in the, in the Cotton District, North Nash College View neighborhood, one of the things that I would love to see just 2% or 5% of some of this money go toward would be to help us, the city, maintain our infrastructure. The students use so much of that, and I will tell you, just as a recent experience, we fought really hard to finally get new signage up on some of the streets. South Nash being one. The sign was up for about two days before it was vandalized and gone. We've had five or six streetlights on University Drive that are vandalized. I don't know the first, for fact, that that was students, but I would say, pretty likely, if you're leaving the bar pretty late at night and walking down University Drive in my neighborhood, it's a good chance that there's some student involved. I think the night route's good. What I would like to see is help us, whether it's replacing some signage, doing some things like that, that really do demonstrate that you're not just here to have a party in our street and then leave, but you're here to actually make sure that that works. And I think, I think there's a way for us to be able to do that, where we're working together to make some of those things happen. So I'm encouraged. I think most students behave very well. It's the ones that don't that mess it up for everybody else. But a little bit of help potentially with some infrastructure things, I think, would go a long way, and showing that this really is a relationship that the city and the university wants to have. So if you could bring that back to your, your student association and the VP, and I'm sure all the lawyers will get involved, that would be something that I think very much would benefit everyone.
We're happy to receive that feedback, and certainly will continue our discussions about how we can be in support of the, the great relationship that the city of Starkville and our student body have already. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board?
Mr. Mayor, I want to say, welcome to Stark Lake.
Thank you. I haven't gotten the shirt yet, but it's on the shopping list.
Get one.
I will. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
The next public appearance is by Jamie Bachman of Volunteer Starkville on mid-year program successes. And Ms. Bachman, you'll have 10 minutes.
Congratulations on the awards you received, by the way.
Thank you. Is my 10 minutes started yet?
No, she's paused.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity to come and talk to y'all about what Volunteer Starkville's been doing over the past six months of our fiscal year 2015. Just in case you don't remember, our fiscal year goes by our Volunteer Generation Fund Grant, so it begins in November and goes through October. So I'll be reporting on November through April of 2015, basically highlighting our National Days of Service events that we've held within the community to encourage service by our residents on these days of service, as well as the people servicing engaged by our ongoing programs, and then our upcoming service and annual events. We began our fiscal year 2015 in November with Family Volunteer Day. This was our second year of hosting a service project in conjunction with the Day of Service, which just basically celebrates families that volunteer together to make our community better. We hosted our sweet potato job, where 25,000 pounds of sweet potatoes were dropped at the Palmera Center parking lot. We had 91 volunteers that helped bag those sweet potatoes, and 12 food pantries actually came to that site to pick, pick up loads of sweet potatoes, take back to their patrons. We also had volunteers out at the Refuge. The Refuge, with their decrease in staff over the past few years, they can always take volunteers, and so we had just a group out there from MSU that was doing some ground beautification, helping clean up some of the boardwalk trails. In December, this is not a day of service, but something that I loved, I love volunteering with youth and engaging youth in volunteerism. We have a great partnership with Ward Stewart Elementary's art program, and each year, we partner with them for several different things. Around Christmas time, it's to make homemade Christmas cards for our elderly in nursing homes and hospice, at the hospital, and then this year, we actually had enough that were made to include with the volunteer group that does the Almost Like Home meal for the first responders that are working on Christmas Day. We had a total of 600 volunteers that engaged in that project, and 869 greeting cards were made and distributed. The MLK Day of Service, this is a great opportunity for our residents to celebrate Dr. King's legacy and, and serve on that day. We host several different events. Some are hands-on service projects, and some are just community events. We hosted seven this year, engaged a total of 179 volunteers that served 469 hours. Because I have a very short amount of time, I'm just gonna highlight where we have volunteers serving. We have volunteers out at West Octopahal Elementary School, helping clean down, wipe down their schools for the spring semester. Octopahal Animal Rescue is a nonprofit welfare, animal welfare organization. They have an outdoor service project. Christian World Missions is really adding on to their building infrastructure for their after-school programs. We have volunteers there, at Emerson Family Resource Center, and at the Palmer Home Depot store. We hosted our annual community volunteer fair, where we had 30 of our nonprofits set up, to where people could come and learn more about where to volunteer in our community. National Volunteer Week is always in April. This is just about celebrating the service of our residents and what they're doing in our community to make a difference. We do several different things to recognize volunteers for their service. We feature a different individual or group on our Volunteer Spotlight blog and share on social media about their past year's worth of service history. We also always nominate someone from our community for the Give Awards. This year, we hosted, we recognized, and I guess nominated Joan Wilson and Lynn Gaines, who both received National The Give Awards, which are the Governor's Initiative for Volunteer Excellence. They've received over 60 nominations in our state, and these are not just people that volunteer once a month. These are people that have extensive volunteer history, and we were two of 13 Give Awards that were received. Joan got the Outstanding Service in Arts and Humanities, and Lynn received the Outstanding Achievement in Building Sustainable Community Solutions. The next thing that I've been doing with, with the National Volunteer Week and Actual Service Project we host is a letter-writing campaign for Operation Gratitude. This is a national nonprofit that sends care packages to our deployed troops, and one way they engage volunteers is encouraging people to send in letters of gratitude that they can include in care packages and so forth. We host, you know, an annual letter-writing campaign in the community, accept letters all throughout the month of April, and partner with local arts programs and youth groups. We had 240 letters submitted and 1,020 drawings that we were able to send to Operation Gratitude, overall engaging 1,225 volunteers in that service project that served 566 hours. And then we host our annual volunteer awards banquet. This is something we partner with the MSU Marine Volunteer Center on, and Volunteer Starkville alone recognized a total of 827 individuals among our individuals and groups receiving awards this year. And then our third annual touch-a-truck. I really appreciate the city partnering with us for this event. Three years ago, I was talking to Lynn Sproul, when she was the Chief Administrative Officer, trying to sell this idea to the city, and I think it's a really great community event for our children in our community, and it's wonderful for Volunteer Starkville because it provides us with a large amount of in-kind services that can be matching funds for our grants. This year, last year, we had 284 kids participate. This year, we had 423 children participate, so we almost doubled, or close to, with our participation, and raised 21,951 in matching funds for our grant. The bulk of that is in-kind services from city departments, from the county, and then private businesses. I think the cities is around 2,500 that they contribute in in-kind services. So we greatly appreciate that, and we had all the city departments, they were wonderful in partnering with us. The kids loved checking out the, I can never think of a name, of the, what's the new thing, the new thing that they ride around?
Segways.
The Segway. They love that, and the motorcycles are also a big hit. And then, of course, the garbage truck is always fascinating for the kids to see. So glad Ms. Emma brought it back. The electric department does a great job interacting with the kids, letting them operate the bucket truck and so forth. The street department with their backhoe digger, the, the water with their, whatever that sewage truck is called. I'm not great with all the names. And then, of course, the fire truck. Who doesn't love a fire truck? So we really appreciate the support with that event. And then, just summary of the number of nonprofits and people we've served in the last six months. We've helped 139 nonprofits with volunteer recruitment assistance in our area, and then Clay and Winston County were working to expand to service nonprofits in those areas. We've provided 15 nonprofits with volunteer management training. We've engaged 2,245 volunteers with our events. Our nonprofit partners have engaged 12,075 volunteers in their ongoing and date-specific programs, and together, our data collection that we've been able to gather, we've got 14,320 volunteers being engaged in the last six months in our community, 75,489 hours of service being performed. And when you multiply that to the value of $19.35, which is the value of one volunteer hour in the state of Mississippi, that's $1,460,728 of value being provided to our city and county through volunteerism. And then, just some events to be looking for, we're starting our Fall Volunteer Management Training Series for nonprofits in August. We're hosting our Mentoring Matter Community Mentor Training September 3 to get mentors trained for our programs that are in schools and other nonprofits. We have our 9/11 Day of Service coming up in September. Make a difference, say in October, and Family Volunteer Day in November.
Thank you, Ms. Bachman. You finished with one minute to spare. Questions or comments for Ms. Bachman?
Ms. Bachman, thank you for your efforts, and you do an excellent job of running this organization. I would just encourage everybody to see, if you haven't been involved in Volunteer Starkville, there is plenty of opportunities to do that, and as you've seen by this presentation, Ms. Bachman will make sure that it happens, and they do great work in our community. So thank you very much for all your efforts.
Further questions or comments for Ms. Bachman?
Thank you, Ms. Bach.
Alderman Carter.
I can say the same thing. Just thank you for what you do. I mean, I think that million and a half figure is kind of low for what it's really worth to this community, and I'd like to see certain things, just having, having children, certain things in this community blossom and reach full fruition. And one of them has been Touch Truck, along with community marketing, things like that, but that one right there just kind of took off, and it's been, it's been fun and interesting to watch it the last few years. So not only from a child's perspective, but also to get, I like watching our city workers get out there and interact, and the guys with the sanitation department, they do a great job with us. Thank you.
Thank you for connecting me to Meto View Baptist Church. I was able to help them, and it develops an ongoing relationship already, so thank you so much for that. And then, thank y'all for funding us again. I really appreciate y'all meeting my request and external contribution. I didn't have time to get my thank you note in to this meeting, but it'll be in your packet for the next one, so thank you.
Any further questions or comments for Ms. Bachman? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Bachman. The next public appearance is by Randy Scrivener of Watkins Warden Staffer, presenting the annual audit. And Ms. Scrivener, you two will have 10 minutes to make your presentations.
Mayor, Board, appreciate the opportunity to be here, but I do need to make a recommendation for the next time. You don't turn the lights off before the auditor comes on. You'll never get the audience back. Again, I do appreciate the opportunity to be here. You should have at your desk a two-page summary that I'm going to use to touch on the highlights of the audit report this year, and open it up for any questions or continued questions at a later date, if you have anything, because I know you just got this audit report Friday afternoon, some of you as early as this afternoon. Pages, it's an 80-page document, and as always, we appreciate the assistance of the city clerk and her staff. There's no way that you can get through an audit of the city, size of the city of Starkville, without a highly-qualified, competent staff assisting you, because we throw six auditors in, all auditing different areas for about six weeks. And those six weeks may be different times, and we're harassing the stew out of different people inside of her organization, which disrupts the stream. We try to be as, as, not as disruptive as, as we could be. But again, I really appreciate her efforts. And I think you'll see, when we get to that portion of the audit report, if you go back four or five years ago, and you look at the blanketness of our findings, and you look at how we've been able to drill these findings down to specific pinpoint items, that's a compliment to the continued control and proven environment inside the city clerk's office. And so I just want to preface my statements by saying, by making those comments. Pages two to four of the audit report is what we call the auditor's opinions. That's what you as a board and then what the city is looking for. It is called, they used to call it an unqualified opinion. We kind of objected to that because it made it sound like we weren't qualified to do it, and they've since changed the terminology back to a clean opinion. And that's what this is. This is a clean opinion. This says that the financial records that we audited support within materiality, the, the records support the financial statements of the city of Starkville. Now, to define materiality, there's two types of funds, funds inside of an audit. You have governmental funds, that's your general fund, special revenue funds, capital projects funds, then you have your proprietary funds, which are utilities, water, sewer. That basically says that materiality, and this is a large, when you and I think about it individually, that those financial statements are materially accurate within $150,000 for the governmental funds, and $75,000 for the proprietary funds. I will tell you, on the city of Starkville, we record every adjusting entry. So anything we come across, we do record those adjusting entries, or we recommend them for approval. Pages five through 15 of the audit report is what's called the management discussion and analysis. That gives the city an opportunity to take the financial statements and to convey to a reader of the financial statements what was going on, what drove the increase in property tax revenue. We added 300 more rental units, so on and so forth. And that's, that's an opportunity for the city to put its touch on the financial statements. It also falls under our opinion. In other words, we say that we confirm and we verify those statements that management makes, so that is part of an audit process also. We start getting into some of the meat of the financial statement on page 18, which is a statement of net position. That's still a little really broad, as far as the numbers are concerned, as far as what I consider to be important information to you as board members, but the assets for 2014 increased a little over $1 million this year. The cash position of the governmental funds of the city was $2.3 million. I will give you a more drill-down number, a little more specific, later on. Liabilities increased 271,000, so your net worth increased about $740,000. So the, the net assets of the city increased close to three-quarters of a million dollars this year. Page 19 is a statement of activities. Again, this takes everything in the city and lumps it all into one pot. Operating revenues were $19,538,000. Operating expenses were $19,151,000. Always a good number. Net, net revenue, net income was $388,000. So you took in more than you spent. Pages 21 through 29 are what we what we consider the individual fund financial statements. This gets into what you as a board start looking at when you look at budgets. Two numbers that just don't stand out on those financial statements, but are important to your process, is the sanitation funds' cash position. At September thirtieth was four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. And the fund reserve position of the sanitation funds was almost six-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars. Pages thirty through forty-seven are the notes to the financial statement. And if you get really bored, read those, because that then takes all the elements of the financial statement, and that explains where the numbers came from. And there's some information in there we have to scratch our heads and say, why are they writing this way? But that's accounting terminology, and you've got to love it. Page forty-eight is really detailed. This is now getting into the general fund activities. And the general fund activities has a lot of different accounts. It has your general fund, that we consider our operating fund. It has restricted police, restricted fire, the park commission. I mean, it has different elements of that whole general fund. And they're defined as a general fund. The number that's really important to us, though, is what we have, or what you have as a board, as far as spending authority with. The cash position of the general fund at September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, was one million seven-hundred-ninety-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. The fund reserve position was two million six-thousand-six-hundred-seventy-four dollars. Both of those numbers are well within the safe zone of what's considered to be an appropriate fund balance. In fact, it's a little higher than what would, you know, would be considered as a safe fund balance. Pages fifty through fifty-six, again, it's a more detailed analysis of the revenues and expenses for the general fund. General fund revenue for the year was two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. Page fifty-seven gets into other funds. The important information on that other fund, and again, unfortunately, is buried inside this number. But the two percent parks and recreation cash position at September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, was five-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixteen dollars. That's how much money you had set aside to spend going forward of the two percent capital project money. Pages sixty-nine through seventy-one is considered our, is our independent auditors' report on internal controls. We do an extensive evaluation and study and walkthrough of all the control processes that the city has. There were no material weaknesses. Pages seventy-three and seventy-four takes it into compliance with our major federal programs. Anytime you get over a half-million dollars of federal revenue, we have to extend in some special auditing procedures. Again, you had no reportable conditions related to those. Pages seventy-six through seventy-seven was a little bit of a surprise, Ms. Lisa, and I do apologize again to her about that. There were two items that you self-reported on the municipal compliance questionnaire. Those now require disclosure. We, in the past, if you self-reported them, we did not. You know, one of them was related to the timing of approval of the minutes. To where you checked that answer, no, on the municipal compliance questionnaire. We researched the board many minutes, and that actually had come up. If we weren't approving them within the thirty-day time period, it's since been resolved. But that was a disclosure that had to be disclosed, because it actually happened. Another one is a gosh-awful report on landfill post-closure costs related to gas betweening. We're not going to do that. Nobody does it. And so that's just part of a finding that's going to exist for a long, long time. Ms. Burgins, you probably remember, we used to have these infrastructure findings-
Right.
-that you just couldn't get rid of. This is just one of them. Yes, sir? I'm sorry, auditor's taking too much time. Schedule of findings, we have the, we have a repeat of prior year in that our accounts payable and payroll liabilities, some CDU records don't match. Again, they're out, little immaterial amounts, but we just want to disclose that. And then the bank accounts, we need to reconcile a few items in the bank accounts. And we're going to work with the appropriate people inside the clerk's office to rectify that. That's the audit process in a whole, that's eighty pages worth in five minutes, Mayor. So do anybody have any questions?
Is any more recommend the personnel that we need to have on our security bonding? I saw that on there.
Yes. You had, everyone was covered. We had a few policemen that were covered at a lesser amount.
Before?
And you had one deputy clerk that the old bond just carried over. I gave Ms. Lisa that list right before the meeting, so we can get those raised up. Everybody was bonded that was supposed to be bonded. We just had a couple that were not bonded at the appropriate amounts.
Thank you.
And it was just an oversight.
Further questions or comments from Mr. Scrivener? Any further questions or comments from Mr. Scrivener? Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Scrivener. All right. We'll now hear public comments on the resolution to remove the Mississippi flag from city properties. We'll do that in alternating fashion. I'll ask first for anyone wishing to speak for, then for anyone wishing to speak against. Each person will have a maximum of three minutes. Each side collectively will have a maximum of fifteen minutes. Is there now anyone wishing to speak in favor of the resolution to take down the city flag on, or to take down the state flag on city properties? And please approach.
This is for removal, right?
For, in favor of removal.
Okay. My name is Chris Taylor, President of Tippecary County NAACP. Support to remove our state flag from all properties owned by the city. Columbus had removed the Mississippi flag from city ground, and West Point had never raised. Now, that would leave Stark the only city in the Golden Triangle with the state flag. I don't think that's right. The flag present an image that is offensive and harmful to many Mississippians. I believe it send the wrong message about who we are as a community. Until that time, state laws give us the option to fly it. I support ultimate win, ultimate woman win effort. And I for our board, we act to take down the flag. In two thousand one, with a ratio of sixty to forty, minority and majority, that the, that's why the flag fell in two thousand one. The odds are still there now. Sixty percent majority, that's non-black, and forty percent minority. So it would never pass if you want a citizen of Mississippi to vote on that flag. There are other Mississippi cities. And think about our leaders in Washington, D.C. Senator Cochran and Representative Thompson. They don't fly, and they offer. And they're in D.C. There's a reason for that. There are the other Mississippi cities, Clarksville, Grenada, Hattiesburg, Magnolia, Vicksburg, they have chosen not to fly the state flag. The removal of the flag can be a positive change for our city and state. In October, our city will host the City of Mississippi League Conference. Hundreds of municipal elected officials will visit our city. I hope that we have become one of the cities that has removed the state flag from its ground. Look at what the NCAA did for South Carolina. After they removed the flag, they lifted all restrictions. And we can do that here. With the changes at Mississippi State and Ole Miss-Macon, especially that baseball field, we can host a postseason tournament. That's bull. We have a state, I mean, a university president that is against it. He want the flag to be changed. And I think, I know that if it change, if we take down our flag tonight, you altemen and ultimate woman elected to take it down, that there'll be a positive change in this city. I'm speaking for myself, members of the NAACP, and concerned citizens of Tippecary County. I have over hundreds of calls for me to come up here and speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Is there anyone now wishing to speak against the resolution to take down the flag? Yes, sir?
Mayor, Board of Alderman, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Kenneth Austin, a new resident of Starkville, registered voter, Ward One. Own a business here in Starkville. I'm the FBO operator at Bryant Field, the municipal airport. As a new resident, I want to say I'm very impressed with the city of Starkville. What I find most impressive is that you, as the local municipal leaders here in Starkville, started this meeting with the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. You went on to say, "And to the republic for which it stands." I would like to remind everyone in this room that Mississippi is one of the fifty states of the republic that you just pledged allegiance to. Ironically, we're now counting to vote whether or not we want to remove the flag from municipal property. I would suggest that you vote no on this resolution, or rethink your words each time you say the pledge of allegiance to the flag. A second reason to vote no on this resolution is the design of the state flag is left to the state legislature. Let them do their work. I do vote that you keep the dialogue open, keep the flag up, so that the legislative process can work. Also, I want to say that if you choose to vote to move the flag down, make sure that you have contacted your state legislature and told him of your feelings. A third reason to vote no to this resolution is that I do not feel it's enforceable. How do you propose to remove the flags? What are you going to do with it once you take it down? Can't take it home. It's municipal property. At the airport, what am I to do when the governor comes in, and his aircraft has the state flag on it? How do I tell him he has to leave? Do I call the police? Do I call you? Who's going to come tell him he cannot have it? Couple weeks ago, when the ambassador of Kajikistan to the U.S. came through the airport, and the Mississippi Air National Guard and the adjutant general came with their helicopters, with their state flag on it, what am I to do? Tell them they can't do it? A fourth reason is because of the school district. Let me read to you what the state law is. The flag of the state of Mississippi is required to be flown over the schools. They shall also be taught a course of study that shall include the history of each flag, what they represent, and the proper respect thereto. There shall also be taught, in the public schools, the duties and obligations of citizenship, patronism, Americanism, and respect for the obedience of law. So my question is, what are we teaching our children such that they think the flag has become a symbol of oppression? Y'all have any questions for me? I think I made myself kind of clear. I do recommend that you vote no. Mr. White, I got to say, when I grew up, that meant black power.
That's, your thoughts inspire, Mr. Dodson. Thank you. Further, excuse me, now, we'll hear anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed referendum. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Mayor and Board of Alderman, good evening. My name is Dr. Maya McDoom. And as a concerned and well-informed citizen of Starkville, I applaud the efforts of this resolution and to remove the state flag from municipal buildings. As a relatively new citizen of Starkville, seeing the state flag on my daily commute has been quite an experience. It is one that elicits a reminder that black people and people of color in America do not belong, that they are less than, and they are not equal. This emblem of hate is not only a reminder of America's bloodstained history, but it is a reminder of the bloodstained presence. We cannot continue to bear this bloodstained emblem of hate and divisiveness. The city must act to remove it from public buildings. If the citizens of South Carolina can act to remove the Confederate flag, why not both Starkville and why not Mississippi? Or will we continue to wait until another senseless act of hate and injustice occurs? Will we wait when it's another group of innocent people cut down in the prime of their lives? Or will we wait until it's one of our relatives, a brother, a sister, our father, our mother? When good people fail to act, injustice prevails. So I ask you today, where do you stand? Will you continue to let a legacy of injustice prevail, or will you adopt this resolution and take a stand for justice? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McDoom. Is there anyone now wishing to speak against the proposed resolution? Anyone wishing to speak against the proposed resolution?
Good evening. My name is Alvin Turner. The vice president of the NAACP, old bounteous. They say do unto others, you have them do unto you. We have our first responders that put their lives in jeopardy. What we need to do is go to the root of the problem. Go to the root of the problem, then you'll find that things will be better if you go to the root of the problem. We have rap songs that is degraded. We do nothing about it. We have them sagging pants, do nothing about it. So as the old bounteous say, do unto others, we have them do unto you and do right.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Is there anyone now wishing to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Is there anyone now wishing to speak against the proposed resolution? Is there anyone wishing to speak for, against, or indifferent to the proposed resolution? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one?
I'm sorry. It takes me a little while to get up and sort of get my breath together. I just got back up. Dorothy Isaac again, and I'm coming before you. I would rather like to thank you for offering up your suggestions for what we need to do. And that's a symbol of what we do. You know, sometimes a symbol can be a mistake. It can be a mistake anytime we want to go behind ourselves and try to do what we don't want to do. But as you notice, as we say the pledge, I never say the pledge. And, you know, I have that right as Americans, never to say the pledge. And as for, you know, being cynical about what we tell our children, if you teach your children, they're going to learn anyway. They're going to learn. They're going to learn what's going on, what go on. The flag, that flag needs to be removed. We have been fighting the flag for a long, long time. It needs to calm down. It can go to the museum. It can go over to a Mississippi State and put in the museum. They got a history, you know, of cars out there. It can go out there and be put in. But I would just like to say, please, please bring that flag down.
Thank you, Ms. Isaac. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, that will conclude the public comment period on the resolution on removing the state flag from city property. The next matter that you have before you is the first matter of board discussion, and that is the discussion and consideration for each city employee to receive at least ten dollars per hour and approval of increasing the salary of the mayor and Board of Alderman effective July first, two thousand seventeen. Discussion.
I'd be recognized, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vaughn.
I move that all city employees shall be paid at the rate of at least ten dollars per hour effective July the first, two thousand and seventeen. And effective July the first, two thousand seventeen, the salary of the mayor shall be increased to seventy-five-thousand per year, and the salary of each member of the board, all of them, shall be increased to twenty-thousand per year. Pass it down. Reduce to the writing.
All right. Motion has been reduced to writing, as it has been read, and reduced to writing. I will not ask for it to be reread without objection. Is there any objection? Seeing none. Do I hear a second to Alderman Vaughn's motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
Discussion. Alderman Carver.
I too was appalled that this came back so soon. I think that votes are in place. Oftentimes, when you get in here, you know how the votes are already in. Everybody across this table already knows. Everybody across this table already knows probably how the vote's going to go out. It's our third time visiting this, but I would recommend that we did separate these out. I think they're two completely separate issues. I think us sitting on this side of the table and the city employees sitting on that side of the table are not even in relation, actually. One's going to be an $8,000 pay increase within just a few years total. You know, I heard figures last time, I think, of 35% or 40% around in that area, pay increase. I think, I think us as elected officials serve different functions than maybe somebody who's earning nine some odd dollars an hour. So, I would just, again, encourage the board, if y'all would, to separate this out, and I'd like to vote independently of the issue for each city employee to make $10 an hour. I think that's a great and honorable act. I think the other needs to wait. I see that effective date of July 1, 2017. We all know that's a false date, because as time told us last time, six months or a year go by, and then it'll be considered a pending pay raise, and then it'll get voted in. Probably, if I were a betting man, I'd bet before this term were out. But anyway, again, my recommendation, if y'all don't mind, would be to separate those issues out for us. Thank you.
Now, Alderman Carver, are you making a comment suggesting, or are you making a motion to divide the question?
I'm going to make a motion.
All right, the, and we, I don't think we've ever dealt with this during the time. I, I, I chaired board meetings. Alderman Carver is making a motion to divide the question. So, in the event that that is seconded, you will go into discussion on a motion as to whether to divide the question into two parts. You will take a vote on that, and then in the event that it is divided, you would vote on two questions separately. In the event that it is not divided, you would vote on the question as a whole. So, Alderman Carver's motion is to divide the question into a, a motion that deals specifically with the $10 an hour minimum for city employees, and a motion that deals specifically with the pay raise for mayor and board of Alden. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Further discussion? Any further discussion on this matter? Any? Alderman Little.
Assist to the CAO. Is your staff currently working on a project as far as the $10 an hour employees? Could you enlighten us a little bit on that, and where they're at in the process?
Sure. Alderman, there are two proposals that we have, that we have been asked to, to work on by elected officials. One is, uh, is, is one that Alderman Maynard has, that I'm guessing accompanies this item that is under discussion now, as it relates to, it relates to a schedule that would, uh, that would resolve this exact issue, which would, uh, which would have everyone in the city making $10 an hour by 2000, by July 1, 2017. There's a second item that the mayor has asked staff to work on, and, uh, and that, that goes a little further to deal with, uh, with, um, with compression adjustments that might be created by, uh, by that $10 mandate, but, but I do not have that here with me tonight.
How far out are they on that? Do you have any idea?
Uh, I mean, uh, we, we have a draft ready, but it's, but it's unreviewed, and so it would, I mean, it's, it's not something that, that, I think the budget chair has seen a draft of it, but it's not something that we've presented to the, to the elected body.
They, they have the, they have the important pieces of it together. I think it has the makings of a very good opportunity to work on not only compensation issues, but also skill development within the ranks of our workforce. And I really do think the discussion of all of this is untimely. I can see where this is heading, but, uh, I do think it would be better to consider all of that as a whole. Now, if you pass this, it doesn't mean you can't consider, uh, the, the skills program, and I will still ask you to consider the skills program. However, I, I think it would be better i- if you waited to consider this at a later date.
This was somewhat a surprise to me also that it came back up, especially so quickly. I think we should tap the brakes a little bit and back up and look. My question to the budget chair would be, is your plan the same plan that's presented a month or two ago as far as funding, implementing it?
The original plan, yes, would be the same as the one I presented before. I have not seen the details of this new plan going forward. Based on the summary that I've heard, it would be comparable to the plan that's out there from a cost standpoint, but would also provide some additional increases to frontline supervisory positions to help shore up some of those as well. But I have not seen, seen or run the numbers on the new plan.
I personally would like to slow down a little bit and maybe discuss this during the budget process. I think that might be the more timely...
Mr. Mayor?
Want to discuss it?
You may.
I yield the floor.
Certainly, on the $10 an hour plan, nothing would be changed going from fiscal, the next fiscal year. It would have to all be from '16, '17 on the plan that I proposed. Those would be changes in '16, '17, and ultimately, the, the new board coming in for '17, '18 would have to adopt the second phase of that, because that's the board that adopts that final budget for, for '17, '18.
Further discussion? Alderman Walker.
I think it's very important that we look at the, the $10 minimum for all of our city workers that are currently under, under that. I, like Alderman Carver and Alderman Little, I was surprised to see that this made it to the agenda again this, this quickly. I, I think breaking it out is, is the, is the way to go. I think too often, we piecemeal situations together as opposed to looking at it a little bit more comprehensively. I'm very curious to see what the draft of, what the staff has been working on, to see how that helps not only the workers that are making under $10, but what that does for increasing the skill of our labor and the wages for the, those that are immediately above the $10 hour. I think we are, I think everybody at this table wants to be able to pay our city employees more. The question is, how do you get there? And I think we have to have a comprehensive plan in order to be able to do that. I'm not sure right now that we have that. I think the good thing is if we do vote tonight for that $10, it doesn't lock us into looking at how we get there and how we, what the mechanism is for doing that. So, I think that's very important. So, I yield the floor.
All right. A reminder, we are discussing a, a motion to divide the question. Any further disque- any further discussion on the motion to divide the question? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Alderman Carver's motion to divide the question, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By a vote of three in favor with four against, the measure fails. The, so we'll go back into discussion on the main motion, which is the, the motion as it was originally presented by Alderman Vaughn. It, it includes both the $10 an hour minimum and the pay raises for elected officials as of July 1, 2017. Yep. The effective date of both of those is July 1, 2017. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman Walker.
I'd just like to say, I think this, uh, I think this is a, we should not be giving ourselves a, a raise, or the, whoever's going to be running in 2017, elected officials, again, on the, on the heels of the last board giving, adding to, which I think is, is justified. And I, I think this is, I think it goes beyond optics of not looking good. I think it's, I think it's not good policy. I think this is a, this is a part-time job. I think if you are interested in this being a full-time job, we advertise all the time for openings and city positions, that if you want to work for the city full-time, there might be an opportunity for people to do that. But giving ourselves, or the people that sit in this position, while sometimes, like after tonight, it's not going to be any fun to be in this position, all right? And sometimes you might think, why am I doing this? You couldn't pay me enough to do it. Having said that, I, I think this is, I think this is a, a decision that I think we'll, we'll come to regret, that's going to, every little, what we found in, in the budget is every dollar counts. Every dollar counts. When you're talking about adding another $35,000 a year to salary line, that's $35,000 a year that could go to fixing a drainage problem. $35,000 a year that might help overlay a street. Those are real concerns, and if, all you got to do is look around the city. Despite the, the workers' best efforts, we just can't get to it all. I would like to see us allocate that money in a, in a, in a different way, so I will certainly be voting against this tonight.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Alderman Vaughn's motion, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By a vote of four in favor and three against, this motion passes. The next matter you have before you is the discussion and consideration of a resolution of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville, Mississippi, removing the state flag from all municipal properties. I will make some comments on this prior to opening the floor for discussion. As I have previously stated, I am in support of this resolution, and this is not an easy decision for me. Now, the decision is not difficult because of how I feel about the state flag. I feel very strongly that our state flag needs to be changed. It projects an image that is offensive and hurtful to many, and it also is a very divisive topic. Anytime our state flag is discussed, it, it is a topic that divides rather than unites. And I believe that our state symbols should be our most unifying features. For all that we can agree on or not agree on, as the people of a state, at a bare minimum, we ought to be able to agree in the pride we share in the symbols that we raise on behalf of our state. So, uh, my, my, my feelings are very clear on the state flag. I think it should be changed. I, I hope in the future it will be changed. Now, this decision becomes a little more difficult because I have a tremendous amount of pride in our state. This state, as far as I'm concerned, is the, the greatest patch of earth on the planet, and it is a part of everything that I am. And it's a difficult decision for me to support not flying our state's flag. However, uh, state law does set an optional protocol for posting the colors on flagpoles. It, it is optional, uh, uh, under state law explicitly, yeah, to fly the state flag. And as this issue has arisen, I have become more observant as to how others are observing that protocol, particularly private entities throughout town, many of which have flagpoles at distances along highway quarters. The overwhelming trend is private entities choose to exercise the option not to post the state flag. Now, that overwhelming trend makes it glaringly obvious that most of the most prominent places in this community where you see that symbol, the one that divides, is on municipal property. So, I do not believe that is the statement we want to make about who we are as a community. I believe in my heart that Starkville is a community of, of people that are characterized by loving kindness. We are a place that values unity and inclusion, and I believe the appropriate thing for us to do at this juncture to project those values is to exercise our option to no longer fly the state flag. And it is my hope that our legislators will use this moment to act quickly and adopt a symbol that everybody in this state can be proud of. And I hope it happens sooner rather than later, because I long for the day as mayor of this city, when my chest can be filled with pride as I raise a banner that unites all of us and represents the state of Mississippi. Unfortunately, I do not think that's the banner we have now, and I, I do urge the board to adopt the resolution. Discussion. Alderman Webb.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to read something for our city, and I'll thank you at that time, and thank you so much for those beautiful comments that you just gave us tonight. On Wednesday, July 15, I contacted CAO Tower Adams to place the removal of the state of Mississippi flag from the city of Starkville-owned property on the recess agenda. After the senseless killings of nine people in Charleston, South Carolina, we saw an image of an alleged killer in a photo displaying the Confederate flag. As we all know, that emblem is on our state flag. Since that time, the state of Caroli- South Carolina has removed the state flag that was a Confederate symbol on it. As a result of the shooting that claimed nine lives in South Carolina, several municipalities in our state have elected to remove the flag, and some of them were not using it to begin with. That is now Columbus, Mississippi, who recently did it as, uh, last Tuesday. I was in attendance at their meeting to support them on for that, and everyone was so graceful in how that process came out. Clarksdale is not using it. Hattiesburg is not using it. Vicksburg, not using it. Grenada, Magnolia, and West Point, next door to us, is not using it. And let me add one more educational institution in there. Mississippi State University, one of the most prominent universities in the state of Mississippi, is not using the state flag. That speaks volumes. Their faculty senate did that in 2001. I commend them for that. And as recently as on Friday, I received a telephone call that shocked me, because I was told that Dr. Holloway, Dr. Louis Holloway, the superintendent for the Starkville-Locktibi Hall County, Starkville-Locktibi Hall Consolidated School District, had ordered that the state flag be removed from the flagpole outside. I ran over to the school and captured an image of that, and again, I thanked him tonight for that. Some might say that I don't value my state, or I may have dislike for my state, but I'm going to share with you all something that none of the board members know. I have one child, and he's my son. He's 23 years old. He just enlisted in the Mississippi National Guard as a reservist. Now, you're probably sitting there saying, well, maybe he couldn't find a job. I'm not bragging, but I want to tell you a little bit about him. On May 9 of this year, he graduated on a Saturday, with not one degree from Mississippi State University, but with two. The first one being from the School of Business and International Business, and the second degree is Arts and Sciences in Spanish, and my son is trilingual, English, Spanish, and French. He has elected to forego graduate studies this semester, which will have been in the fall as well as in the spring, because he'll leave for Fort Seale for his training to come back and serve our state. Now, as a mother, when my son called and told me that, I had some concerns. He's my only child, but that is a sacrifice that he has made, and guess what? I've embraced it. I could have easily said, let's look at something else, but guess what? I didn't do it. He will become a National Guard reservist for our state. Secondly, that morning after the shootings occurred, and that would be June 18, I sleep with my TV on. I woke up that morning, and I saw an image of a man that I was shocked to see. It was my friend, you all. His name is Council Rodney Williams, who serves on the council in the city of Charleston in South Carolina. That was my friend on TV. I didn't know what had happened. He was standing behind his mayor of that city, and that's when the news media was telling that. I was shocked and dumbfounded, and immediately I text him, and the words that I said was, "Our prayers from Mississippi, with you all during this difficult time, please call me when your schedule permits today." Back in Au- in Austin, Texas, in November, I introduced Mayor, Mayor Wiseman to my friend, Councilman Rodney Williams, and I called the mayor that morning and told him and made him remember who my friend was, because he assisted us with a mobile workshop tour that we were trying to get on the shuttle for. And that day, we had a very interesting conversation. And you all, I've seen a man cry two times... And you all, I've seen a man cry two times in my life. But hearing a broken man on the telephone who was trying to make sense at how someone could enter into a church that night and take the lives of nine people who had never seen, and they clearly embraced him while he was sitting among them, it made no sense to him, it made no sense to me. And then the United States, it shocked, it sent shockwaves because none of us could make sense of that. And later on that day, we would see an image of a person that they had arrested with a Confederate flag symbol that's also on our state flag. Since then, South Carolina Governor Nikki Haley went to bat for the removal of that flag. If you looked at any of the bait on state floor, you saw Jenny Horn, a Republican, crying, asking them to do something about it. It was so touching to see her crying because it was sad. Since then, that state has removed that flag. Did you know that when our state lost two of its police officers in Hattiesburg, Mississippi recently? Ask Mayor Dupree, who was the first state to reach out to him in our state? It was South Carolina. I'm wearing two lapel pins. One is my City of Starkville lapel pin, and one is the one from South Carolina, from Charleston. And it was given to me by Councilman Rodney Williams. You know when he gave it to me? When our state became number one in football last year? He sent me this lapel pin, and it simply said on there, "Hail State." That's all it said. And I'm wearing it tonight. And I hope he was able to get online and be able to watch us tonight because I told him that we'd be on TV. You all, tonight, I wanna say thank you to the people that got up with the comments because I didn't know what would happen. And at the end of this juncture, what I want for us, and I don't know which way the votes are gonna go tonight, and any alderman on this board can tell you, I never once called either one of them and asked them to second a motion, support it in any way. I only sent them a text, reached out to them and told them that I would be bringing this forward. They will have to vote their conscience and convictions, but I know what I will do tonight. Council, if you will, and before I go on, let me thank a couple of people. And I told them, so you don't have to worry businessmen if you're listening in. I told them that I would not share the names. You all would be shocked at the white businessmen here, white businessmen here, who reached out to me and thanked me for bringing this measure forward. Now, for them, it may be about economic revenue. For me, it's a little bit more personal and a little bit different. But you will be shocked. If I could call the names of some of these businessmen, you all would run out of here that want to see the flag removed because they understand the money aspect of it. It's hurting us. The National College Athletic Association has a ban on the state of Mississippi, and it is the only state now that that ban is presently on. It was removed off of South Carolina the day that they removed the flag. It's hurting us. Do you realize that Mississippi State is being hurt by that? And the other areas of our state are being hurt by that? It is time that we unite together. When I hear people say, "It's part of our heritage." Well, if it's part of our heritage, aren't you leaving some people out? It can't be inclusive, our state flag. I wanna thank Chris Taylor and the many members of the National NAACP. Thank you so much for your kindness. I wanna thank our mayor, Mayor Parker Wiseman, whose office I went in into last Monday. From the moment that I told him that I would be bringing this forward, he supported me and went on TV and supported me, and tonight, he's spoken to you all. I will never, ever forgive, forget the mayor for doing that. Mayor Wiseman, I say thank you. To Dr. Louis Holloway over there at Starkville High, who understands that there are very difficult decisions that he has to make as a leader. But Dr. Holloway knows the numbers of his district, and he knows that 60% are Black Americans that enter his school district. He clearly understands that. And on Friday, when he had that flag removed, our state flag, to me, it spoke volumes. I say thanks to Dr. Louis Holloway. And as for Senator Cochran, whose office I've had the chance of visiting on two times, you have never seen the state of Mississippi flag. As Senator Cochran, who has top rank and seniority there and who chairs the Appropriations Committee, he does not have the flag at his office. And lastly, Congressman Thompson does not fly our flag at the Capitol. He does not. This is sad and unfortunate because it tells me that there is something wrong. Tonight, I don't know what the outcome of this will be, but I hope that it will be one that will be favorable for our city. I'll be reading this, and then I'll present my motion. Where's the mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville? The Board of the City, acting forth and on behalf of the city, hereby find and determine and adjudicate as follows. Pursuant to Mississippi Annotated Code 3-15, the state flag may be displayed but is not required to be displayed from all city buildings. No law compels that the state flag be displayed over city property. The decision to fly the state flag rests entirely within the Board's discretion. The current state flag incorporates the Confederate battle emblem, which is a symbol of oppression, discrimination, and division to many citizens of the city. The city can no longer support the display of the state flag on municipal property. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board as follows. Section 1, the state flag shall be removed from city property effective July 29, 2015, and shall continue to be removed as long as the state flag contains the Confederate battle emblem. Section 2, the resolution does not address or control the display of the state flag over school property, which is governed separately by Mississippi Annotated Code 3713-5. And before I read the motion, Council, will you speak to Mississippi State's, the State of Mississippi Statute 3-315?
Yes, ma'am. It's 3-315, as you stated, and it states that the state flag may be displayed from all public buildings. The word "may" is clearly permissive and not mandatory. And from time to time, the Mississippi Supreme Court has spoken on the issue, and it states that the decision to fly a state flag rests entirely within the political branches. So the Board has complete discretion on this issue tonight.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, I present my motion at this time. Move or approve the resolution of the mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, removing the state flag from all municipal property effective July, Wednesday, July 29, 2015.
Motion has been made by Alderman Wynn to approve of a resolution of the mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, removing the state flag from all municipal property as of July 29, Wednesday, July 29, 2015, as presented. Alderman Wynn, is that your motion?
It is.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Perkins. Alderman Wynn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, other than say I request a roll call vote.
All right. Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman Perkins.
Mr. Mayor, very briefly, I'm not gonna make an impassioned speech on this tonight. I'm sure all the minds are made up. The voices have been heard, but I think it's very important for me to make just a few comments before the vote. And the comments are as follows. On April 17, 2001, the voters in Locktaby Hall County, Mississippi, spoke on this matter. And the votes represent the voice of the people. According to the data that I have, based on my research from the Locktaby Hall County Circuit Clerk's Office, during the election of April 17, 2001, the question that was put before the voters was, if you want, whether or not you want to have a new flag without a Confederate emblem, or do you want to retain the existing flag with the Confederate emblem? My vote is gonna be consistent with the voice of the people of Locktaby Hall County. The voters in Locktaby Hall County cast a vote of 55.45% in favor of a new flag for the state of Mississippi without a Confederate emblem. Forty-four point five-five percent of the voters in Locktaby Hall County, Mississippi, on the 17th day of April 2001, voted for the existing flag to be retained with the Confederate emblem. And of this amount, that amounted up to 10,185 votes from Locktaby Hall County, in that the people have spoken, their voice has been heard, and I think it is incumbent upon me as an elected official to adhere to the voice of the people. With that being said, the people of Ward 6, the City of Starkville, and Locktaby Hall County, in my opinion, have given me a mandate, in my opinion, that I need to support their views, their voice. So with that being said, I'm going to, on the roll call vote, vote to support the resolution that in essence, if passed, would remove the existing flag that contains the Confederate emblem from all city-owned property. And I yield the floor.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman Little.
I would like to say a thank you to everyone that spoke tonight, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Turner, Kenneth, I can't think of your last name. Ms. Dorothy, I appreciate everyone. I didn't know what we were gonna be getting into tonight, and I'm sure most, most everyone at the board table didn't know what we were gonna get into tonight, taking up this issue. And I appreciate everyone's ability and the way this matter has been handled tonight. I spoke with the press last week with Carl here, and so everyone knows where I'm at. There was no hiding that. And I appreciate the vice mayor's comments on how that played out here in Locktaby Hall County back in 2014 years ago. And that precedent was set to allow the citizens of Mississippi to decide what flag we as a state will fly, and I would respect their decision. Tonight, we're discussing taking down the official flag of the great state of Mississippi. I believe we, as a city within the state of Mississippi, should have enough respect to fly our official state flag on city property. However, I do recognize that it has been offensive and is offensive. And it may be time for the state to look to consider other options. I recognize that. However, I believe it's not the Starkville Board of Aldermen's decision to choose what flag we fly. It is up to the citizens of the great state of Mississippi, and I will not stand in their way. That being said, I understand statutorily, we are not required or bound by any means to fly the flag, but the flag has flown over the City of Starkville for years and years. And that's, I will vote to keep it. Whichever way goes tonight, we'll all walk out of here and be cordial and move on, and today, tomorrow will be another day. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Alderman Carr.
This is an issue I probably grapple with more than any other, and because of the fact that people, it's in the eyes of the perceber or perception, and most people assume this debate's gonna be racially divided on the color of your skin and nothing else. But from all the cause I got, I found an interest in it. Some African-American supported it, and some Caucasian wanted it down. So it was kind of a mix of people, more than I thought it'd be just divided on, on some kind of racial divide. Again, with that perception is one of those things. I was raised in a generation where I've really struggled with maybe the difference between now and 40 years ago. I came up through the Starkville Public Education System where, and really what I'm getting from the community is my people just don't even really know it's there a lot of times. They don't know what's flying up the top of City Hall. But I wasn't raised to be, to treat others like that. And it was one of those deals where, and really grappling with some, maybe people from a previous generation do perceive that flag as some kind of racially motivated flag where I may not, and especially people coming after me, the younger generation may not perceive it at all about any kind of racial, you know? I don't know what, you know, happened before I was born on the earth and how that affects me. But I maybe come from a different generation than other aldermen at this table who's got a vote in this than some of the community members. A good example, case in point, let's say a high school kid rides around with a Confederate flag on the back of his truck. I may not see that as a racially motivated tactic that the child is trying to do, and it may not be, but it's oftentimes in the eye of the beholder, if he's flying around with the United States flag, he's a patriot. If he's flying around, he's got Southern pride, if he's got a state flag. So it's kind of how you perceive and how you were raised and what happened in your life and how you see things. I do think this is kind of a, I said in the press, maybe jumping the gun or maybe just came too quick. I think that this is a knee-jerk reaction to what happened in South Carolina. That was a psychotic nut, and there, I would never, regardless of his, you know, race, that the bigger attack I see is not more or less on African-Americans, but more maybe an attack on Christianity, that he could sit in there for an hour on the pasture, invited him, come over there, and he sat beside the pasture for an hour, and then he gunned the guy down. And that's, I think he's, I think this is probably one of the most psychotic individuals we'll ever see in the United States. I think this is a reaction to that, and I think the state, South Carolina, had to deal with it because that's an in-state issue with them. But the fact that Mississippi, and specifically, you've got 297 municipalities, and when we each collectively start addressing this, I think that may be not the best way to do it. I think each and every, instead of each and every municipality addressing it, just wait to see what the state says. And then furthermore, in the community, and that was a good point that Mr. Taylor did, he did say that maybe it wouldn't ever come down. I was gonna offer tonight to maybe send it back to the community, and I don't know about our demographics of, you know, if it ever would come down if it was sent back out to the community. But I think it's one of those issues that, you know, I've got a lot, a lot of business owners from, maybe from the other perspective, that call me, said, I'm leaving town if you do it and don't do this. And I mean, I'm getting high-rate phone calls from the other end of the spectrum. Either way, it's been a divisive issue. I think we either way should move by tonight. If it, if it doesn't pass with this vote, then I think that we should just wait and let the state issue, let the state handle it. But either way, I, I think a lot of times that this might be too soon just because something happened. And again, there's been reports of he flew flags from different countries. He flew, he's wearing a Gold's Gym shirt in some photos, and should we ban Gold's Gym from him? You know, no, you shouldn't ban Gold's Gym from coming to Starkville if they want to come just because some kid in South Carolina did some crazy, crazy act. But with that, I yield the floor.
Further discussion? Any further? Alderman Vaughn.
My opinion, you know, whether we leave it up or whether we take it down, hate does not lies in that flag. Hate lies in a person's heart. Racism, prejudice, and injustice lies in a person's heart. It does not lie in that flag. You can leave it up or you can take it down. If you're gonna be prejudiced, you're gonna be prejudiced. You're gonna be hatred, you're gonna be hatred. You're gonna be racist, you're gonna be racist. That lies in an individual heart, not in the flag.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman Walker.
I think what you've seen tonight, if you sit through this meeting, is that we have a lot of important issues that we have to deal with in the City of Starkville. I think this is an issue for our state. I think it's an issue that we are being asked to address here tonight. I agree a lot with what the mayor had to say. For me, I personally believe that our state needs a new emblem. When you talk about patriotism and do you love your state, the answer to that is yes. We do have an option. And I've thought long and hard about this over the last 10 or so days since, since we knew that we were gonna have to make a decision here. I've talked with a lot of different folks in the community. I've talked with family members who served our great state in Iraq to get their perspective. The symbol is a symbol, and Alderman Vaughn is correct, is that changing the symbol in and of itself isn't going to change who people are on the inside. That is absolutely true. I also think that it's true that we are the last state in this great union that has that flag that celebrates that as part of who we are as a people. Unfortunately, in Mississippi, a lot of times, we're 50th in a lot of things. That's, that's something that I think is absolutely uncalled for. We have better people than that. Sometimes, it's not things that we can control. Sometimes, there are, there are a lot of implications for us taking down this flag. This is clearly a polarizing issue. It always has been, it always will be a polarizing issue. There are economic advantages of this. Being able to host, the potential to host an NCAA event is a real thing. We are Mississippi's college town. This is, this was not an easy decision. This is not an easy decision for me. My heart... My heart says one thing, I think we need a new flag. But I also think that it's important that we consider flying the flag over our City Hall. However, at the end of the day, my decision comes down to what do I think is right for our city and our state? And in this case, I think we have the opportunity, our state, our city, has the opportunity to write a new chapter of what is Mississippi going to look like going forward. So after much consideration and deliberation, I will be voting tonight to remove the flag from City Hall.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please answer yea, nay, or abstain when the city clerk calls your name on Alderman Wynn's motion.
Alderman Carver.
Nay.
Alderman Wynn.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Nay.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Vonn.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
By vote, four in favor with three against, the motion passed.
Mr. Mayor, may I say one comment? On Saturday, you all, my church held this groundbreaking ceremony, and with me in attendance, Pastor Stone invited all of our board members as well as the mayor. And in the sermon, there was one sentence that stood out to me because I asked God the other day, I said, "Show me and guide me and give me direction that this will be best for us." And you know, I knew tonight that four Aldermen, and I didn't know who they were, based on a sentence that was on Pastor Stone's screen on Sunday, he said, "God's presence is more powerful." God's presence is more powerful than anyone's power. The presence of God is more powerful. So you saw that tonight, that God's presence was more powerful than seven Aldermen that sat before you to move our city forward. Vice Mayor Perkins, Alderman Vaughn, and I want to share something private with you. As board members, we really don't get a chance to talk to each other despite what you all think. Our schedules are busy, we don't visit. And Alderman Walker contacted me. You all, when I got off the telephone, he never committed to me, but you know what he said to me that stood out in my mind? He said, "Whatever happens, I don't want this to divide our board." He was concerned about us as board members, because sometimes we have to lean on each other. Alderman Walker, I wasn't going to tell that tonight, but I just had to say that. He was concerned about our board and what affects it, this would impact us. Thank you all. Mr. Mayor, I yield the floor.
Alderman Carver, did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, you always heard a gun doesn't kill people and a flag doesn't kill people, and I don't think that flag's ever killed anybody. I don't think it can kill someone. I think that for certain individuals, it's a sense of pride, for others, it's a sense of hatred. I think with that, we're going to have to keep this dialogue open in the city. I think we've got some issues. This is, it's good, it's healthy to see this, but maybe we've got some issues. We still need to work on this community, and we do well at that. But again, I think, I never, I never really thought this would divide the board. I think this board has gone through more than I could ever have imagined in the last couple of years, but I never did, I never questioned any kind of division between this board as professionals and as friends, so I still applaud each and every one of you for running for office and for taking these tough decisions on.
Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, may I, what's the next item?
The, is there any further discussion on that before we move to the next item? Any further discussion on that topic? All right, seeing none, the next matter on the agenda is a report on the progress of the siren grant and installation of the new siren.
Boy, can I clear a room or what? Phyllis Benson, Golden Triangle Planning and Development District. At the request of Vice Mayor Alderman Perkins, I'm here tonight to provide an update on the recently submitted grant for the acquisition of a warning siren in his ward. I need to first of all mention that grants funds for the acquisition of sirens are few and far between, but as a result of Hurricane Katrina and the October Hall County being designated as one of the go-zone counties, the city of Starkville was eligible to apply for a grant to NEMA or to FEMA through NEMA, and you were able to purchase some sirens. I think that was done on the previous, well, the application was done on the previous administration that were purchased during this one. With, at the insistence of Alderman Perkins, we were able to contact funding agency to find out that there was indeed a few grant dollars left. They imposed a June thirtieth, twenty fifteen deadline to have an application in. Your city clerk has the password for the submission of that application, so we worked together. She typed it up, submitted it, hit the button, and we verified today that that application has been received by NEMA, and it is currently under review. We posed the question that if they knew when, we might have a funding or award announcement, and the best I can tell you is, no news is good news. So as long as we have not received a negative response, we can hopefully rest assured that that money's there and an award will be forthcoming.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Any questions or comments from the members of the board for Ms. Benson?
Did you know that you were specifically named in our audit?
No.
It just says the strength of the PDD and the grant writing process is one of our strengths, so.
Well, great, great. It's a pleasure to work for the city. I appreciate the opportunity to do that, and hopefully we'll be able to continue to seek funding sources to meet the needs of the city and its citizens. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Benson.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Benson.
You're welcome.
The next matter on the agenda is the discussion and consideration of an appeal of a stormwater hearing board variance decision by Dan Moreland Holdings for the Louisville Street Mini Storage Project. Mr. Sanders, would you like to make the introductory comments on this matter?
I've liaised on to this board.
Oh, okay.
I'll be happy to, Mayor, if you want me to kick it off.
Please, threw me for a loop.
That's okay. Mr. Moreland's here to kind of give an overview of the project, answer any questions that the board might have. The Stormwater Hearing Board has actually met twice on this matter. The first, the first meeting, and I don't have the dates, they're in the minutes in the packet, but the first meeting, the item was actually tabled because the Tree Advisory Board and the Board of the Justice and Appeals were hearing matters that would directly or indirectly impact the stormwater hearing results. So they put it on, they tabled it till those boards were able to meet. They recently met again and denied the variance. Mr. Moreland met the requirements on submitting a letter to appeal to this board, or this stormwater ordinance. And at that, Mr. Moreland, I'll just kick it off to you if you want to kind of go over the project and talk a little bit about some of the things that we talked about in those meetings.
All right, and Mr. Moreland, you'll have a maximum of ten minutes to present your appeal. Hold on one second, I've got an Alderman. Before Mr. Moreland presents, I've got a question. Does staff have a recommendation?
Staff does not have a recommendation.
Did you have a chance to review, Mr. Pritchard?
We did, Alderman, and I typically would not offer a recommendation. I just typically do the analysis based on whether or not it does or doesn't meet the requirements that's set forth by this board, by the policy that's set forth by this board. I don't really want to get in the position of recommending something or not, just from an equity standpoint for everybody who may know before or after for any development.
Alderman Mayor, did you have anything further? Yes. All right, Mr. Moreland, you may proceed.
I started this project, I bought, purchased that property in the sixth of, oh, sixth of October of last year, and I started at that time going through the process of getting here. I went to at least a dozen, over a dozen meetings. Every meeting I went to, it ended with, "I understand what you're trying to do, but the Board of Aldermen is the only one that can give you any relief on this." So I'm here for relief on this. About halfway through, I was instructed I had to hire an engineer, so I hired Clyde Pritchard. He stayed back here till he had to go, and he, his recommendation was, if there ever was a stormwater project that needs to be exempt, it's this one. There is no way, this is the wettest summer and the wettest spring and winter that we've had. I'll go down there every time it rains, there is no stormwater running off anywhere. It's with the malaria fever deal going around and all of this in the West Isle, if I had to deal a pond down there, number one, it's never going to catch any water because there's no water to run off. Number two, if it did catch water, it would just be a mud hole. It wouldn't be anything. You'd have to watch the kids, you'd have to build a fence around it, all this kind of stuff. And what I want, if common sense ever played into anything is this. Now, having to hire an engineer and do all of this other stuff that, you know, it makes the project cost at least thirty percent more than what it would start with. This project was never on the, I mean, the property was never on the tax road till I purchased. Now it's on the tax road. But Mr. Pritchard went down, he surveyed it, he done the whole ball of wax, and he said, "There's no reason whatsoever to have a stormwater runoff there." It grows, the water goes to a ditch, and it goes down, and this is two-tenths of a mile from the city limits. If this was in the city limit, was outside the city limits, I would have already been operating down there. But I have been, what, eight months, nine months, and still, you know, can't use it. I've had a building sitting down there since March that I can't fill up. But I guess what I'm saying here is, if y'all were just looking at the common sense on this thing, and everybody, somebody told me the other day that, well, it doesn't meet the requirements for the, for the ordinance. But this board has the right, has the power, and I was told this by any of them, and that they have the power to change this, to do anything they want to do on it. And now I'm requesting the fact that, to do away with a storm warning water proposal there and let me get on with my building.
Questions or comments from the members of the board? Alderman Carver.
I think you're exactly right. I think that this board can take opinions and do what they want. I think tonight was one of the best examples, the superintendent of the education system came in, and normally when businesses come in and want to be exempt from sprinklers, I've never seen one get to walk through here like that. I think of the fact because it was the school system and the indemnification, but on top of that, I think that we can take these, they are advisory in nature, they're advisory committees, and I've seen them go both ways. They come in here and the board says not to do something, we go the other way, and then the committee says to do something, you know, we can go either way. And we put in place individuals on those committees that are usually expert in nature or something, and for some reason, they're placed on there, and they've had lots and lots of committee meetings, and they've served in their capacity. I think the Stormwater Retention Board was not prepared maybe to take your argument the first night, and that's why they tabled it. I applaud you. At the time, we've had some discussions, you know, going back and going through the proper channels. I applaud you for doing that. I think tonight, you've done sufficient work on y'all's end to get this passed. Visiting out there, the last couple of times it rained, I went out there and looked, and just stayed in the car and looked, and it's flowing fine. So close, I hate to say it's in the country, but, I mean, I know you're in the city, but it feels like in the country out there. And anything you do to that area, it's going to be the nicest development out there. I know that you've said several times, you could tear that fence down and make it a cyclone fence. I don't think you'd do that. I think, as with the Tabers and other developers in this town, I kind of told Mr. Larry Taber, I voted against a couple of things. I told him one time, I said, "If you come up here from now on, I know from your past work that you're going to do the right thing." And I think that's the same way with this instance, is through, through all the developments you've done in town, I think it's safe to say, we know that you're going to try to make it look nice. I think it's going to be definitely taking a blighted area and making it probably the nicest place out there. Water does flow down here. Like I said, I went out there and looked at it, and I don't see that, I don't see it really, if there was ever an exemption for this type of situation, this would probably be it. Water can't flow up here, and the way it's coming off, it's going right down in the ditch, the way God designed it and leaves the property. So you're exactly right, you hit the nail on the head, and the Board of Aldermen can, can take those recommendations and can go either way. And I would highly suggest that the board approves your variance request tonight and lets you start building. I know you've got a building season, it's got to occur before it gets too cold, and again, I applaud you for going through the proper channels with this whole process. So thank you.
Well, the property on the south, I mean, on the north side is sixteen-second property. It will never be developed for anything, even though the water doesn't go there, it goes into the Highway twenty-five ditch, runs about twenty yards down there, hits the ditch that goes south. So I mean, it's no, it's no water problem. By building a retention pond, we're going to create a problem. We don't have one now, so let's don't create a problem when we don't have one.
Alderman Walker.
You're right, this is close to the county, but it's not. It's in the city limits. And it's fine to look at common sense, but at the end of the day, we have an ordinance. So when I look right here at the ordinance, it says, "For a two-year storm, pre-development's five-point-four cubic feet per second, post-development, seven-point-one." That's an increase of nearly thirty percent. The ten-year storm is an increase of nearly forty-two percent. I would agree that we don't need a retention pond, and that's not what's being proposed. The retention pond is a pond that has water in it all the time. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about a detention pond, a dry pond. What I would strongly encourage is that there are more solutions. There are a host and host of best management practices that MDEQ and other, every engineer knows that we can solve. You can get to a no-net increase from post-development without doing a detention pond. There are other options available. That, to me, is common sense, to look at what our options might be, because this is outside of the ordinance, and it is going to increase runoff, period. When you build more concrete out there that you're proposing that's not there now, it is going to increase runoff. I look at this as precedent more than anything else. You're right, nothing else is likely to be developed out there. I get it, water runs straight to the ditch, that's what we want, but at the end of the day, you are, you're going to be increasing runoff by nearly forty percent. That is just unacceptable. That should be unacceptable to this board, because the amount of development that we are having in town right now, high-density development, is going to pale the increase in costs that those developers are going to have to bear, pales in comparison to what this, where if you have ample room to deal with stormwater, stormwater, and you are choosing not to do it because you don't feel like you have to. We're going to ask these people in town with higher-density development, that's going to significantly increase runoff, and they're going to have to deal with it. They're going to have to deal with it on-site, whether that's underground stores, that is going to cost significantly more. And you know what I hope we do as a board when they come? We hold their feet to the fire, because that's the right thing to do. And in this case, it's the right thing to do. At the end of the day, if it doesn't happen, that's, you know, it's not going to hurt my feelings, but I know it's going to make it more difficult when the next developer come in, comes in here and asks for the same thing, and I think they have a, will have an argument to make to want to know why they didn't get the same treatment. I think that's a fair question to ask. If I was a developer, I would ask that same, same question.
All right, let me ask, let me ask the same.
You're out of the board. Further discussion? One of y'all has to yield to it, to ask.
I yield the floor. If you have a question, I'd be glad to.
Mr. Moreland, proceed.
All right, the president said on the Cotton and Mill project out there, it has no stormwater deal.
Alderman Walker, would you like to field the question?
They're dealing with that with underground storage. It's underground storage, storing it in pipe.
Contractor told me they had no, no restriction whatsoever on it. And I'm not trying to get them in trouble, I'm just saying that I just want common sense to do this, and when an engineer that's very qualified, and I think every one of y'all at this table give you that Clyde Pritchard is an A-one engineer, and when he says there's no reason whatsoever to have, and Adam, you heard him say that. Adam, you heard him say that.
I have heard him say that, yes.
There's no reason whatsoever to have a retention pond or anything down there. And he stayed back here till he had to leave a while ago. But anyway, uh, I would just wish y'all would take his recommendation and, uh, just go, and so I can continue to get this thing built.
Further discussion. Alderman Walker.
Just have a question for you, Mr. Kemp. Um, when the, the mill at MSU had to go through this process, were they required to deal with stormwater management?
Alderman, they, they changed their site dramatically. They, they did an existing evaluation of all the impermeable surfaces. All the old, and again, I, I have all this in the file, if you're interested, come look at it. They counted all the old impermeable surfaces, they did a pre-development run off based on all of those impermeable surfaces and the existing rating. As you know, they pretty much lowered the back half of that site. It's a lot flatter, there's a lot less slope to it. And they have, their engineer provided calculations to us that showed the post-development runoff for the mill, parking lot, and run, hotel, and the parking garage did not increase the, did not exceed the pre-development runoff. Now, there are two lots, and it was, it was just under that. If, there are two additional lots that are undeveloped in the back. If those lots are able to develop, it will push it over, um, to where they'll have to mitigate it, so.
And so what you're, and so what I'm hearing you say is that they didn't have to mitigate, because their pre-development condition and their post-development condition met the ordinance?
They, they were essentially the same.
They've, so they met the ordinance?
There was no increased perfect calculation.
Thank you.
Further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
You may.
Board, since this is the first one of these items to come before you, I just wanted to speak briefly on the legal criteria to grant a variance under Starkville Stormwater Ordinance. You know, our ordinances are drafted differently. Some of them have what you could call loose language and provide the board with a lot of discretion. Others have tighter language, which arguably limits the board's discretion. The stormwater variance procedure and the criteria that are listed in there, I think is some of the tightest requirements the city has ever written into an ordinance. And what those criteria are, is that in order to find the variance, the, first of all, the Stormwater Hearing Board, and now this board, has to find that the failure to grant the variance could result in exceptional hardship. That's number one. Number two, the granting of the variance will not result in increased stormwater runoff greater than ten percent. That seems to be just a math issue to me, it either will or it won't. Number three, that the necessity of the variance is not the result of the conditions on the property which have been self-imposed by the applicant. And number four, that the variance is only the minimum variance necessary and not more than is needed. The Stormwater Hearing Board kinda racked through that criteria and found out that, uh, the first three items were not met, so therefore, they never got to number four. I agree with the statement said today that the board has discretion to overrule the Stormwater Hearing Board if it wants to. But just remember, if that's the way the board wants to go, that under general tenets of municipal law, the board has to have a rational basis for its actions. So, if you're inclined to grant the variance, imagine testifying in trial, and how would you rationally say that this variance was needed based on the criteria in the stormwater ordinance? And if you can make that case in your mind and stand on two feet under oath and do that, you certainly have the discretion to make that decision. But just weigh those considerations before you vote tonight.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
No, I was told to draft one.
All right, yeah. We have no motion pending.
Let me, uh, give me thirty seconds.
Why don't we take a recess? Without objection, I'm gonna take a simple recess. Saying none?
Yes.
Meeting will now come back to order. All right, uh, we are in discussion on, uh, the Dan Moreland's appeal on the ruling of Stormwater Hearing Board. Discussion.
I have, I guess I have a motion. Counsel, will you read that motion for me, please?
This is a motion from Alderman. When move approval of the Stormwater Variance Request by Dan Moreland Holdings for the Louisville Street Storage Project on a finding of fact that the strict adherence to the Stormwater Variance criteria, criteria would result in exceptional hardship to the applicant and would in fact kill the project. Therefore, the economic benefits of this project far outweigh holding the applicant to the strict variance criteria on this specific project.
Alderman Wen, is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Since the motion has been read and it's been reduced to writing, I will not ask for it to be reread without objection. Any objection, saying none, do I hear a second to Alderman Wen's motion?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Carver. Alderman Wen, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, I do not.
Discussion. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion, saying none? All those in favor of Alderman Wen's motion, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By a vote of five in favor with two against, this measure passes. The next matter you have before you is a request for approval of a variance for the Moreland Real Estate LLC project with conditions. Discussion. Discussion. Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of the variance request for the Moreland Real Estate LLC project with conditions as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, saying none? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. Alderman Perkins, you again?
Opposed.
All right, so by a vote of six in favor and one against, this measure passes, so. Thank you, Mr. Moreland.
Can I say one thing? I guarantee you, when this thing is over, y'all will have something down there to vote with, have something down there to be proud of. And I appreciate what you're doing. It's been a long, hard week, but I appreciate it, and I think.
Thank you, Mr. Moreland. The next.
And I take back all them bad things you're said about y'all.
The next matter on the agenda is a discussion and consideration of accepting the proposed budget for Mississippi State University for two percent revenues. Uh, and, uh, the delegation for Mississippi State has waited through a long, uh, night patiently, yeah, and, uh, we appreciate it.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of the proposed budget for Mississippi State University for use of two percent tax revenues as presented. Alderman Wen, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Thank them for their patience.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is the discussion and consideration of holiday decorations for the new city hall. Discussion.
That's my, Mr. Mayor. I was down at MML, and I, I don't think we have, for the new city hall, revenue set aside for holiday decorations. And I think we need to consider what we're going to do there as we get ready to go into the new, year to, to really begin thinking about that. I would like to put it on staff to, to do that. But I would make the recommendation that in the next budget, we allocate up to fifteen thousand dollars for holiday decorations for the, the new city hall and the area in front of the roundabout there as well.
Motion has been made by, or is this a motion, or?
It is.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to allocate, uh, fifteen thousand dollars in the FY sixteen budget for holiday decorations associated with the indoor and outdoor portions of the new city hall. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
I'm sorry, can I hear the motion a little time?
It was a motion to, uh, appropriate fifteen thousand dollars from the FY sixteen budget for holiday decorations at the new city hall.
Second.
Uh, motion, but seconded by Alderman. Little Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I say we let staff look at that. I think they need to probably get with, um, the downtown association so the, the decorations match and complement each other as, as we move forward, so I, I trust that they can make those decisions.
Alderman Carver.
I was gonna say the, the figure, I mean, where did y'all come up with that? Is that a pretty extravagant decoration, or is that pretty basic in the decoration world, or?
Unfortunately, I'm afraid that's gonna be pretty basic decoration.
Really?
I, I, I met with a gentleman at MML that was there just for holiday decorations, and believe it or not, you can spend up to eighty thousand dollars for a Christmas tree if you'd like to. I didn't wanna go that extravagant, but I think for a nice fifteen-foot tree out in that roundabout, plus some wreaths on the building, it's gonna be between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars, probably. That's why the motion says up to, I mean, it, kinda leave that at their discretion.
Are we gonna put a tree in the roundabout each year?
We could.
It'd look nice.
Have a lighting of the tree ceremony?
Be great.
That would be great.
Yeah, that was attempted, uh, with a tree, uh, at Cadence Bank, uh, for several years. Uh, it, it never really became the, uh, the community-wide event that everybody was hoping it would, uh, but this would certainly offer a prominent place to give it another shot.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion, saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is the discussion and consideration of the audit and financial statements.
Make a motion, we accept the audit as presented.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to accept the FY twenty-fourteen audit as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Wen. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request for approval for Alderman List, Wen, CAO, Taylor Adams, Buddy Sanders, and Edward Kemp to attend the National Brownfield Conference, September first through sixth, twenty-fifteen, in Chicago, Illinois, which is reimbursable by the Brownfield Grant with advanced travel approved in an amount not to exceed twenty-nine hundred dollars per person. Discussion.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of travel for Alderman List, Wen, CAO, Taylor Adams, Buddy Sanders, and Edward Kemp to attend the National Brownfield Conference, September first through sixth, twenty-fifteen, in Chicago, Illinois, which is reimbursable by the Brownfield Grant with advanced travel approved in an amount not to exceed twenty-nine hundred dollars per person as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Wen. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits? Alderman Carver.
I was gonna vote for this, and I'm not saying I won't, but one of the citizen, citizen comment came up and said that any of those dollars used for travel, or do that deduct from a grant that we would receive? Or does that offset that at any, for any difference, or?
You have, uh, funding in your grant, uh, that's available for traveling and pro, for travel and programming. Uh, the chief administrative officer may wish to, uh, address that question as well.
Would, would love to, Mayor, the, uh, Alderman, thank you for the question. And, and if I could, I'd like to give a little background on just this grant program in general and, and why we're, why we're making this trip, um, or ask, why we're making the request for this travel. The, uh, we are in the process of reapplying to this grant. Um, our first round was awarded two years ago, uh, and it has been wildly successful. Uh, the issue that we had, we, uh, well, and let me say, through the first two years of this grant, uh, we have, uh, we have, uh, at present, I believe Edward Dunn Phase Ones on almost twenty properties, and we pushed six or four of those through to Phase Two.
What's it, say six or eight?
Six or eight through to Phase Two, and, and are actually in the process right now of making our first application for a Brownfield remediation grant from, from EPA. And so, um, round one went, has gone so well, uh, and has been such a great benefit to the community that we have, uh, that we felt that reapplication was necessary. But we had a couple of concerns in that, uh, as we were moving to reapplication, and the issue was, how could we continue to grow the, the, the project or the, or the grant? The issue, uh, our current grant is, allows use within the city of Starkville only. And, uh, and, and it's been great, because there, again, we've, we've done public, public and private properties with this, it's been great. But, uh, there's a premium on spending this money within the grant. In fact, EPA has some pretty stringent guidelines that require that we have certain percentages of the money spent on certain dates, and we did not know that we could hit that fully within the city limits in a second, uh, in a second, uh, application period. We, our award period. We, uh, Edward and I started brainstorming with the Brownfield Committee and with the folks at DEQ, and a solution presented itself that we're really, that we were really excited about at the time, and we felt like it was a great idea. We did not realize how great an idea it was at that point. We got with the folks at the Planning and Development District and started exploring multi-jurisdictional awards. Uh, we're, the, the application that we're writing now, uh, would expand our grant from just Starkville to all seven counties of the, of the Golden Triangle Planning and Development District. So, uh, instead of our one award for four hundred thousand dollars that could only be spent inside Starkville, this would now be Starkville, Actibah County, MSU, all the school districts, all of our neighboring counties. And what's great is we're able to push the, um, the application amount from, from a maximum of four hundred thousand up to a million dollars. Uh, we don't know that we'll get the full million, we think that it, but we feel like this, this application will, if awarded, will come in six hundred at minimum, but probably the full million, given what our consultant is telling us and the, and the size of the, of the district. Starkville continues to serve as the lead agency on the grant, so we still sort of have some priority, and it's somewhat prestigious for us. EPA liked this so much that this is now becoming the national model for how they're gonna ask people to seek reapplication. Uh, the, you all will remember that Edward and I, along with Buddy, participated in a, in a, uh, in a session, helped moderate a session at MML this year on Monday morning at nine AM, and that was with the folks at DEQ at the state level and the actual Region Four Director of this program, uh, from, who's based in Atlanta with EPA, where we actually sat there and talked about the successes that we've had with, with other cities. And, uh, and she actually said in that meeting that, that what we were doing is what they want everyone to do going forward. So, the reason we're asking, so, so certainly we are asking to take a larger contingent than we normally would to a grant like this, uh, but, uh, and it's actually not just us. Actually, uh, we believe that the Planning and Development District will be sending representatives as well. Uh, we have performed well enough that interestingly, interestingly enough, uh, we now no longer work with the same consultant that we did when we started. Uh, we now work with her boss, she's handling us personally. And so, um, we feel like this is an area where the city is leading. They have asked us to bring our project lead, our assigned lead planner, and our economic development specialist. Um, and, uh, where we have, there are two elected officials on the board that went to Brownfield training when we got the grant. That being the mayor and the budget chair. Uh, they're, they were unable to make the trip. Uh, and so the reason that we have another elected official included, uh, in this trip, or in this request, is that Alderman Wen has come to all of our quarterly meetings, and she expressed interest in the trip. So, we, we have presented her as a, as a representative of the elected body. And, but, but to that end, we will take, uh, I can speak for staff at least, when I say that we are open to any edits that you all wanna make and the personnel that you are sending. We're just, uh, we're just putting the request forward for your consideration.
And the dates?
Alderman Little.
The dates are the first through the sixth, is that correct?
The, the dates of the conference are the second through the fourth. I put the first through the sixth, because those are the days that we would potentially be in travel status. Obviously, we'll try to limit that as much as possible. Edward and I, Edward and I are talking about, there is some pre, there is pre-application training on the morning of the second, which is September first. It probably makes sense, if you send Edward and me, for us to be there for that. So, instead of going on the Wednesday through Friday, Edward and I would be going Tuesday through Thursday. We would come back a day earlier than the rest of the group. But as we are in, in an application period, and we are trying to expand this grant to a million dollars, we feel that, and that, and that was, we just found this piece about the pre-grant training yesterday. We would, I mean, Edward and I would like to, to be there for that piece, but we would, we would request that we come back a day earlier than, than the other representative, just from an equity standpoint.
First of September is also, will be the first meeting, is on Tuesday, I believe, right?
It is, it is.
And I know we're in the, we'll be finalizing the budget, the statutory, do we want the fifteenth?
That, that is correct.
And you, as the finance director, are you confident that you're gonna have all this, and be able to go, be gone for that amount of time and miss that first meeting in the month?
This, certainly, I would say if any member of the team would fall off, it would be me. I mean, I'm basically on here because I'm your project lead, and because, well, Joanna McCormick is on maternity leave. She had a baby yesterday morning, which, uh, and so, uh, for, uh, for, uh, and for, for those of you who have, who have been on And so, for, for, and for, for those of you who have been on, of course, that is former Alderman PC McLaurin's daughter-in-law, and so they had grandchild join them yesterday. Certainly, if, if she were available to go, I would be asking to send her, but, but just where we are from a staffing standpoint, I'm, I'm on there. But it, but if, certainly, if the board needs me to stay, I will stay.
I have, I'll defer that to you as far as, or you'll know more about where you're gonna be as far as the budget at that point, shouldn't you?
Sure, I, I feel like we'll have a, based on the draft document that the clerk and I are working on, I feel like we will have you a, I feel like we'll have you a, a completed budget draft for your consideration by your second August, by your second August meeting. Obviously, that's, that is, that's gonna be the staff work, but I mean, the, and that's, it's your budget, and so there will be some changes that you all will certainly make to it based on your priorities. But, but look at, I, I'll get, I'll get my work done, however you need me to do.
Well, I, I appreciate that. There is a lot in the pipeline just before that, too, with the insurance matter that will be coming up.
That's, that's correct.
And there's, there's a lot going on during that time.
Sure, and so, and, and Alderman, certainly, I will offer, like I say, if the board opts to send me, and the workload is such that I can't make the trip, I, I mean, I'll voluntarily step back at that point.
I should be mindful of that.
Yes.
With all that's going on.
Oh, yes, sir.
Planning and development is supposedly so busy, and engineering is so busy, needing an extra hill. That's a lot of folks we have, the amount of progress we have going on.
Sure it is, sure it is. And so, certainly, we're happy to meet as a team, and, and I think any one of us is willing to fall off if the workload is such that we can't, that we can't make the trip.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion, saying none? All those in favor of Alderman Vaughn's motion, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. I have six in favor and one against. All right, by a vote of six in favor and one against, this measure passes. The next matter that you have before you is...
You are correct.
Request for approval of the claims docket.
But, but, but where did the motion come from? This is, is that Alderman Maynard?
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of the city of Starkville claims docket for all departments, including the Starkville Electric Department as of July 22nd, 2015, fiscal year ending September 30th, 2015, as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded, Baldman Wen. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
By a vote of five in favor with two against, this measure passes. And that will conclude all of the pre-executive session business you have. You did move two matters related to the administrative assistant position to the end of the agenda, so following your executive session, you will have those matters in the executive session.
Motion's going to closed session.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to go into closed session to determine whether there is a need for an executive session. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion? Do I hear a second?
Thank you, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded, Baldman Vaughn. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. The board took no action in executive session. Alderman Perkins.
Mayor, I, I understand that our chief administrative officer will not be here next Tuesday, so, and I think the chief had mentioned about 6:30 at night out dealing with crime, and so we, I would respectfully request that we have a very light agenda, and we had talked about having a budget meeting on August the 4th, so I would personally prefer waiting till Mr. Adams is here, because he's the one who's put the budget together. So, I'm saying that to say I, I'm gonna make a motion to recess until 5:30 on next Tuesday, and with the understanding and respectful request that we have a very light agenda, he's gonna be gone, and, yes, sir, June, I guess it's June 3rd.
I believe Parks and Rec Advisory Board is supposed to come present, too, next week.